Good evening, welcome. And at this time, I'm calling to order the Monday, August 25th to August 11th, 2025, regular scheduled City of Clemson Planning Commission meeting. Prior to us moving any further, at this point, there is an agenda item per our bylaws that needs to be amended. The agenda incorrectly left off the approval of minutes of July the 23rd, 2025 workshop. And in order to amend the agenda, per our bylaws, we have to have a motion to amend the agenda for that to happen. It did go out to everyone, those workshop meeting notes, minutes, did go out in the packet, it was just left off the agenda. So based on that, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we add to the agenda the adoption of our workshop minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Sub move. This meeting, so everybody knows, is being livestreamed and recorded on the City of Clemson's YouTube channel. As a reminder, for anybody that needs assisted listening devices, you can come up and see Kelly and we would be glad to provide that for you. The Planning Commission is a volunteer committee. It is appointed by the City Council and it serves as an advisory board in the planning and development of our city. We are not employees of the City of Clemson. At this time, I'd like to introduce our commissioners. Commissioner Comby, Commissioner Hyatt, Commissioner Rice, Commissioner Kernigan, Commissioner Crowley, and Commissioner Yoder is not in attendance tonight due to other obligations that we were made aware of. My name is Herb Tyler and I'm serving as a chair for 2025. Thank you all for being here. We do have a quorum. We're going to begin tonight, the same way we've began a couple of other planning commissions, just to give an overview of the steps in the planning process. And one of those that is much questioned is how does it work for a PUD? First, there's a workshop concept presentation. The second step is an informal public meeting for input from the public. There are optional workshops along the way. And then there's formal consideration. One of the things that I would like to ask everybody, that we've been asking for, is what you would appreciate as well, is that we would like to treat everybody with honor, dignity, and respect. And moans, groans, clapping, et cetera. One time we will ask, hey, not appropriate, and after that, we'll ask to leave the meeting. Everybody's voice, no matter who they are, deserves to be heard. And everybody needs to be heard with honor, dignity, and respect. That's how everyone wants to be treated, I believe. I'm going to introduce our administrative staff. Nathan Woods, Assistant City Administrator, who is also in charge of our planning department. From our planning department, we have Art Holbrooks, City Planner, Jacob Peabody, who's our zoning administrator. And of course, we could not do this without Kelly Roach, who is our recording secretary. At this time, the first part of the agenda is our public session. Now, this public session, and there will be others on the agenda tonight, okay? This session, the first one, is anybody who wants to speak about something that is not on the agenda, this within the purview of the Planning Commission. So if it's not on the agenda tonight and you have a comment or would like to speak, now's the time that we'll do that. And we're going to go ahead and open that public session. And if you want to speak, please come up, sign in, then state your name and your address. And it's hard in here, so everybody can hear on YouTube. We ask people to stand under our microphone so everybody can hear appropriately on YouTube and to speak loud enough, because we have a lot of people watching. So at this time, that is open. Is there anybody that would like to speak on a matter that's not before us tonight?
You talking about the 218, I mean the Pine Street deal?
No, that, we will come up and have 218 in just a little bit. This is for anything that's not on the agenda too. Pine Street is on the agenda and we'll have a separate comment for that.
Alright.
Seeing that there's none, we will close the public session for items that are not on the agenda. There are no public comments. We do read public comments, as we're required to, focused on things that are not on the agenda. So, next on our agenda, we'll move on the adoption of minutes from our June 17th, 2025 regular meeting. Have all the commissioners had the opportunity to review the minutes? Are there any edits or omissions that are noted? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from our June 17th, 2025 regular meeting.
Second?
Yeah.
Seeing that, all in favor, raise your right hand. opposed? None? Approved. Have the commissioners had the opportunity to review the minutes from the July 23 workshop? And as a reminder, that workshop is required to keep minutes, but no action is taken at a workshop. Has everybody had the opportunity to review that? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt the July 23rd, 2025 Planning Commission Workshop Minutes.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. Sub move. Now, at this next item, we're going to go ahead and move into it. And I'd like to express the purpose, as I have for others. We're going to go to Plan Development Informal Public Session on PUD 0004612025, Proposed Plan Development 201 Pine Street. This is an informal workshop hosted by the Planning Development Commission. And here, what I would ask particularly for our proposers from the 53 group, this is a time for the public to give the input, to give comments, to give suggestions. And I would ask that you listen intently, that you take notes, and that you hear what they have to say and their input as we get through this process. So at this time, what we're going to do is ask the member of 53 group to come up and update, if you would like, the public and commissioners on anything about that at this time.
I'm Zach Brezina again from the 53 group. Here with our team that will kind of run you through the adjustments we made based on your guys' feedback last time we were here. Like we said before, we look forward to hearing feedback from you guys again tonight. And with the public, our main goal here is to work together with everybody, the commission, the council, obviously, and the community, and to build in something that we think is going to be beneficial to the community for a very long time. So Allison will start us off and run you guys through her adjustment.
How long you got? Do you think she's working?
I don't know.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
Can you pass her? Can you pass me that stack right there?
There you go.
Great, thank you.
Be sure.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, pass it.
I'll bet.
Perfect.
Which one, you on the plane? Oh, just sorry about that.
No, good. Perfect, thank you. Well, good evening commissioners. Really appreciate you taking the time to listen to us and obviously to the public tonight. I just wanted to start out summarizing what we heard from the commission, what we think we heard from the commission the last time they were here for our introduction meeting in July.
If I turn it off.
Can you make it first? Oh, there's a big X. Well, that's always a good sign.
If you open that email from that Nigerian prince though.
Now the mouse is on.
It won't work that much. It's alright, we're only live, one of you two.
It's alright.
Am I making tortures?
Yep. So, at this time, we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break so we can get IT done.
We're back from break. We're gonna try this in a different fashion. The IT's still on their way. So, we apologize for the malfunctions and... Let's go ahead.
Thank you. So, like I said, I just wanted to start with summarizing what we heard from our July meeting and how we put some of that feedback into some of the updates you'll see. So, for us, I think the themes of the comments were really in three major buckets. The first was, we're asked to validate the traffic study and so wanted to commit to taking those counts again in September. And I'll let Jeff with Thomas and Hutton talk a little bit more about the traffic analysis in just a couple of slides. But, we had initially taken counts in April when school was in session and then were asked by the city to survey a few additional intersections and so applied a factor to that so that the counts would be reflective of a school in session to make sure that, you know, our counts were as robust as possible. But, wanted to be as transparent as we can and make sure we're doing all of our due diligence here. So, we will be updating the traffic study with additional counts taken when schools in fall session as well. The second was some parking along Hedrow. We had shown some public parking stalls along Hedrow and heard that maybe there was some concern about those stalls and access to those stalls being able to drive north when a lot of how our access was designed and how our parking garage entrance was designed was really to drive all traffic south away from the north side of the project and into the neighborhood to the north. And so, we removed those parking stalls along the north and moved them into the garage since we also heard there was maybe a concern that the spaces on Hedrow would have been too far away from the retail to be really valuable to the retail. So, the number of public stalls is still the same, still 31 stalls, but they're all inside the garage to improve the proximity to retail and then they can also only exit driving south out of the garage. And then the third, there were questions, I think, around just the visibility of the garage and if there were gonna be headlights shining out of the garage at any point. And it kind of dovetails with the change that we made in the second point here. But, with that, with the removal of those parking spaces along Hedrow, we're able to create a really robust landscape buffer to help screen the garage. And so, now there's landscaping and trees that will screen the north side of the building. So, then just wanna step back and give a little bit of context to the site since we are here for the first time, a lot of people are seeing it for the first time to situate where we are. So, the site is 201 Pine Street. It is just over a two-acre site on the northwest corner of Pine and Clemson Avenue. And part of what really drew us to the site was that it is really one of only a few areas that were identified in the Clemson Next White Paper as being targeted for the higher-density student-oriented development, also targeted as an area that needed additional retail and an area that maybe also wanted additional public open space and an area that could have developed additional multimodal connections, right? More bike infrastructure, better pedestrian infrastructure, just given the proximity to campus and then to the downtown. So, the site is here in red and you can see the proximity to downtown and to the campus. So, with that, I will turn it over to Jeff to talk a little bit more about the traffic analysis.
Thanks, Allison. Where it goes. Hey, my name is Jeff Halliburton with Thomas and Hutton Engineering, civil engineer on the project. And really, Allison did a good summary of the traffic analysis. I'm not sure. One of the things, this is kind of a busy slide, but let me, I'll just kind of briefly talk about what we did on the traffic study. As Allison said, we met with city staff, we identified, it was about seven different intersections, not just around our site, but we went all the way over to Whittington and Edgewood, North Clemson, kind of, and also on College Avenue, both at Edgewood and where Clemson Avenue comes out. We did some existing counts of that back in April. We prepared a study based on the trip generations for this project, provided that study back to staff and then that's when they said, hey, we probably missed three other intersections kind of directly to the north toward the neighborhood. So, that was Hedrow and Pine, Pine and Folger and Folger and Oak Street. So, those were added in. Students were already out, as Allison mentioned. So, what we did is, we still wanted to get a handle on what that was. So, we got counts in June. We also did counts of intersections we did when students were in, analyzed that. We found that all intersections kind of increased by about a factor of two. One was at a factor of three. We applied three to all of the other areas and we used that additional to evaluate those three additional intersections. Allison mentioned that, you know, that's not technically what we really wanted to do. We wished the students were in, but they weren't. We wanted to get an idea of what was happening at those with this project. So, in September, students are getting back, I think this week, next weekend. So, we, I've already began to see some of them arrive in my commute around here. So, we will update those, we'll verify those and update the traffic study with those actual in-student intersections. Honestly, I don't expect them to change a whole lot from our analysis with a factor, but we will certainly prove that. Kind of when you go through all of this, as Allison said, part of the project design is we very much are trying to make the traffic that will be generated from this project to go toward the south. So, on Pine Street, that's the only access for the parking lot for this project. And then, when you come out of the parking deck, it will be a right only, so everything will go to the south. So, from Pine down to Clemson Avenue and then certainly you can go in any either direction there. So, when we looked and took all of the intersections, and you kind of see them all in this busy slide here, most, all are stop-controlled. The only one that is a lighted intersection is all the way up at Edgewood and Clemson Avenue. All intersections either remained in the level of service. In traffic world, level of service ranges from A to F, A being the best, F being terrible. All of these intersections operate either at A or B today. If there was nothing done, they will still operate at A or B. And even with this project, I think the only exception is the lighted intersection at College and Edgewood does operate at a level of service of D today. And with this project, it will still operate at a level of service of D, mainly because all of our, most of the traffic will be going to the south. Yep, there's no way to prevent any traffic from going up to the north, but we do think because of its proximity to 93, it'll be going down to the south. I think there was one intersection that went from a level of service for A to a B. It was because it, I think it increased at .2 seconds is what triggered it. But, I promise you, if all intersections operated at a level of service of B, we would all be happy. So, with that, again, the study was submitted to the city. It will be updated, we'll submit it further, but the study showed that all intersections at build-out conditions, and we projected that with just a neighbor or just a regional growth factor of, I think it was 2% was used, plus our project shows that all those still operate in level of service, this very acceptable.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Louis Vavaros with the Lamar Johnson Collaborative.
Can you speak up a little more so they can hear you?
Sure. Let me just back this up. So, my name is Louis Vavaros with the Lamar Johnson Collaborative. And I'd like to start by describing our architectural visions for the project. We began the process by learning more about the community's strategic initiatives and then learning more about the character of this place. And in doing so, we then moved into looking at the opportunities and constraints of this particular site and developed a series of architectural vision statements as guidelines for what we hope to achieve with the process and this project. The first of these was really determining an architectural character that is rooted in this place, that draws inspiration from the geology and the topography of the natural landscape in and around Clemson. Additionally, we wanted to establish a building that has its own kind of memorable character that honors the Clemson history and character, but also contributes to a cohesive character for this neighborhood and campus. Those are kind of larger-scale goals. At the more human scale, we wanted to prioritize a pedestrian experience with links to bike paths and infrastructure that connects pedestrians to adjacent neighborhoods and the existing fabric of the campus. One of the very important things for us on this project is this idea of an inclusive social canopy. And that's both an actual idea about covered green space, but also an abstract concept about creating a protected place to receive the community and the residents while promoting interaction with Clemson's cultural fabric. And so, indoor/outdoor space is very, very important to this project. And so, we really wanted to create that and foster community engagement, especially at the main entrances of the building and to integrate that with the natural environment. And the final vision statement was really to not only create an environmentally responsible building, but to do, to do, or to create a building that promotes a high quality of life for both the residents and the community. So, these are ideas that are behind the design and driving the project and the planning ideas.
Good evening. I'm Ben Bruey, also architect. I'm JC. So, I'm gonna begin to take you through the current planning and also just a reminder of where the vision sort of drew us into the planning and also really want to highlight to the, what the feedback that we heard and the adjustments that we made from the last meeting. So, the project is bounded by Clemson Avenue on the south, we have Pine Street to the east and Hedrow Lane on the north. And then, to the west of the site is the multifamily housing. And the building, the project is really oriented around two courtyards. There's the residential courtyard to the north and then the public courtyard part to the south. The site from Hedrow down to Clemson Avenue drops 30 feet into geography. And here at the south side, we have Clemson and Pine Street where we carved away the base of the building to create a covered, protected public plaza as a place to welcome and be a space to meet that draws you into a public park that is anchored by the retail, which is in pink on the left, and then the residential lobby on the right. Additionally, we're proposing to put a lay-by lane on Clemson Avenue to be used for both drop-off for retail, but also for the residences. And the goal is to maintain traffic along the more primary street of Clemson Avenue, not driving traffic up further north. Moving up on the south half, there's residential, which is units in yellow, and then the amenity in orange. First level parking on the north half is coming in off of Pine Street as the entrance. And then, as you mentioned before, we're taking some of the public parking that we have in Hedrow, all public parking on there will move into the public end of the garage. Thirty-one spaces here within the front of the garage and then up beyond there is residential parking. Moving up, we've got residential units on the south half and then additional residential parking on the north. We also are pushing the garage in all along Pine Street to provide active units all along so that, so you don't have any visibility of a garage along Pine Street. Additionally, as you notice on the north part, where along Hedrow where there used to be parking is now removed and we'll look to create a landscape buffer, which will really provide a softer transition between this project and the neighborhood to the north. Moving up on level three, there's a residential courtyard in the center that will be enclosed there. Moving up on level five, and you can see on the southeast corner, there was a residential amenity and outdoor deck, just a way to connect the residents back to campus and use back out over campus. And then with the, then there are additional two levels of residential above that. I want to just come back down and touch again on the site access, which I know was shared with regard to the traffic study. As all traffic is coming up Pine Street and entering in, it was really important that we wanted to drive traffic back towards the main arteries and the main thoroughfare. So, coming out, all cars coming out of the parking garage will be a right turn only, coming down Pine, Clemson, and the goal to try to move it as much towards 93.
So, we got about seven more minutes.
So, I'm gonna talk about the design concept and the exterior design of the project at this point. In learning more about the physical character of Clemson, we really, our thoughts really centered around this idea of Carolina clay. And as you see in the image on the bottom of this kind of striation of horizontal layering of materials of a natural tone and of an architecturally vibrant sense of welcoming and color. And so, in our first sketches and drawings and ideas, we were really thinking about stepping, layering, and carving as elements that could really define the look of the building. And so, this is an image at the southeast corner of Clemson and Pine. And again, in terms of stepping, the building is stepping down from the north to low point along Clemson Avenue. In terms of layering, there's both vertical and horizontal layering. The vertical layering are these recesses at set distances that become outdoor balconies that are integrated into the passing of the building. The horizontal layering is creating the building and making it base, middle, and top, which helps scale it down, and changing material with each of those layers. There is also outdoor space in the horizontal layering at the roof of the main corner of the building here, which is outdoor amenity space. And then finally, there's also horizontal movement in the windows because even though the windows stack vertically, the detail and ornamentation around them switches from left to right as they go up the building to create a sense of movement and scale going up the building. So, finally, the carving is really happening at the main corner at the ground floor to create a landscape public plaza leading up into the entrances and a public courtyard beyond. In terms of materiality, again, we're very interested in stratification and clay, and so clay brick is the main building material. And Clemson being a red brick campus, we chose a molded red brick, which is a little bit more residential and a little bit more human scale for the main part of the building, with a warm gray brick helping to accent that at the base, and a metal top so that we're combining old and new and traditional and contemporary in the reality. This is a view looking up Pine where you see the transparent residential entrance and the landscape approach and improvements to the pedestrian way along the street. And you can also see some of the facade detail that we're trying to integrate in terms of window shading and changes in brick scale and bonding patterns to create shadow and texture and detail for a little bit more, again, human scale and authenticity. This is a view looking towards the southeast corner of Clemson and Pine. You can see the retail, outdoor spaces, and landscape leading down to the lay-by lane. And I really want to focus here on the plaza corner, which is a main highlight of the project. This is a diagram that really features that.
Three minutes.
Three, did you say?
Three.
Okay. So, this is really featuring the landscape plaza and the entrances that it leads to for retail and residential along with the public plaza and courtyard in the center of the diagram, which is really a place for dining and programmed social activities. And in this closer-up view, you can really see that landscape plaza that leads you up to the entries. And what we've done here is we've taken the building structure and made it look as tree-like as we can and added a mirror-like type ceiling to help really magnify and multiply the sense of green, the sense of tree, and the sense of canopy. And finally, in this view from the main kind of public courtyard, you can see the landscape-covered plaza in the middle distance and then it frames a view to Memorial Stadium beyond. So, this is our current design and it's really driven by our understanding of the Clemson Next planning initiatives and ideas of contextuality and scale. And it's really about trying to create a project that is architecturally significant and beautiful, but not in a foreign or imported way, but really relying upon local materiality, local concept, to really create a specific and unique Clemson sense of place. So, that is our project and thank you all very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, we're gonna entertain time from the public, be able to give input, to be able to express concerns, to be able to talk. Again, I would urge you to listen and to take notes. It's very important. I will be. And at this point, it won't be answering any questions immediately. If there's some that need to be answered, it could be. And there's always a possibility, a great possibility of workshops in terms of this. So, this is an opportunity, again, for the public. I would ask that we be respectful, that we honor the time commitment that we have. We'd be respectful to each other as we talk. With this project, we always read public comments. There were no public comments sent in for this project. We do have public comments on our action item.
I emailed two.
Email two.
Yes, I don't have them all. They add Hallbrook's. Was it Hallbrook's? I, the SO, but I emailed two.
Okay.
I dropped mine off at City Hall last week. I got another copy.
He sent the letter.
Oh, okay. You sent a letter.
No, you're right. I hand-delivered it to City Planning last week.
Okay. So, from SE Ventures?
What was that?
From SE Ventures?
That's correct.
Okay. SE Ventures. Most of the letter that you have written here is out of our purview. If there's something about the project you would like to explain or to talk about in terms of the project, the purview, if there are any legal matters or things of that with your homeowners or association or with the group, those need to be addressed at a different time and not here. If there's something about this project you would like to address here, you would do that. But, that particular issue of what you put here is outside of our purview and would suggest that you talk to them or this is not the form for that. But, you're welcome to do that. We did get your, what you dropped off. Only other things.
I did Nathan, company Nathan on it and Hallbrook's on it. Or Karen Frey.
Yeah.
Karen Frey?
Yep.
Karen Frey.
Okay.
I'll go back tomorrow and make sure it got sent.
Well, we will, we will make sure and that that's taken care of.
The person that's going on.
Okay. And we'll be able to have comments if you want to do that and then we will get that back in writing and then get that put on the record. I will personally make sure that it does get delivered to them in writing, but we will give you extra time since there were two to be able to express what was in both of those. Okay? So, we will receive those emails and make sure, but we do timestamp when they come through the system. It just depends on which email they went to and we will make sure that it's taken care of. Thank you for informing about it and it is very important. Yeah, she's gonna be able to share. Will you want to go ahead and share about those?
Yeah.
Right now?
Somebody else go.
Okay. Okay. That'll be good. So...
I think the city has read IT issues.
Thank you very much. And we're gonna go ahead and open up at this time. We have 45 minutes for this session. There's three minutes per individual at this time. And if you would come and sign in. So, please, who would like to speak?
All right, I'll speak. Thanks, Gary. My name is Charles Usher on the SO Club. I came to this town in 2003 and I've seen this town grow overnight. I mean, in the last 22 years, it's amazing what's happened in here. As far as these kind of meetings that we're getting in, I got no problem with them when they're down in downtown, North Clemson, you know, where they dropping them at. But, this project here, you coming up in my neighborhood, you affecting my living now. I like my house. I bought my house. It's historic. It's built in 1933. I put over $300,000 something thousand into my house. Now, you coming with this concept of dropping an eight-story building in my front yard, I've got a major problem now. Other than that, you ain't got enough parking for your bed or your retail. Now, we got another problem. Where do these people go and park? Hmm. Well, I can imagine that'll end up in the ESO's parking lot and having to run them off and they're gonna be all up and down Pine Street. They do it now. The tow truck runs all the way up through there. I've been living in my house for 20 years, but I've seen it grow. I remember that project, it used to be all rundown housing and frat houses. Then the developer come in, he cleaned it up, made it nice. It's fine. Right now, it's zoned for 108 beds. Y'all trying to take it up to seven times that much. I just, I'm not on agree with it. I'm all about development. And if I can ask, where y'all from?
Austin, Texas.
Right. I mean, where's the development?
We're out of Texas.
Out of Texas. So, y'all, y'all out of Texas and we live in South Carolina. I mean, we, every day, we wake up in South Carolina. Now, imagine if you brought that project and you drop it in your front yard. What you gonna think about it? Say they come in your neighborhood and say, well, yeah, we gonna, we gonna rezone this and we gonna drop this out and boom, we gonna put this big old eight-story building in your front yard. You might be real happy. I live in a small town by choice. I can live anywhere I want, but I love Clemson because it's a small town. And now, you gonna put this building from me. I don't wanna live in New York. I don't wanna see a big building in my front yard. I like my front porch. I like looking off into the scenery. That's my problem, big time. And I can't understand it. If you get, you got this project and I watched it the whole time, 10-year-old project, this thing was built only 10 years ago. So, y'all coming in here, listen to this, call it like it is, it's a money grab.
About 30 seconds, Charles.
It's all about a money grab. Everybody make that pot of gold. So, I will fight this as long as I can unless y'all come on and give me some of that pot of gold. So, there you go.
Sir.
Charles.
Would you please sign?
Oh, excuse me, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak? Please come on up.
I'll speak.
Okay. Come on up behind you. Three minutes.
Sign in first, Joe.
I'm sorry. Go ahead and sign in first and then we'll start with three minutes. Go ahead and sign in first, and then we'll start with the three minutes.
My name is Larissa Heimlich, and I'm really not good at public speaking, but I just want to mention that this is going to butt up to my mother's driveway. She's right on the other side of Hedges Road, the house that I grew up in, starting in nineteen seventy-four. And it's a beautiful building, I'll give you all that, but it'd be nice if it was on campus where students maybe should be. The balconies are lovely. My mom's always looking at places. Those are lovely balconies. But all that happens with students is they throw trash down. And we are the ones who are responsible then for picking the trash up. Nobody comes and with their little grabbers and picks stuff up after game days and after where the students are having parties. The noise is just unreal. And I know everybody says you live in a college town, but again, my parents moved there in nineteen seventy-four when we had three movie theaters to go to, four if you count On Campus. You had Snoddy's Jewellers. You had every, all this Kay's Dress Shop where my godmother worked, DeRobin Hood Wool Shop, all these places to go to that weren't just T-shirt shops and Subway sandwich places to get sandwiches. It was an actual town. There were places for teens to hang out, and it was a lovely, lovely town. But this is just huge. And it's, I mean, looking at the picture, like I said, it's lovely if it was in Greenville or on campus. But that's huge for, you have old people who live in our neighborhood who want dogs and all. It's just not safe because the students already race through our neighborhood. All the stop signs are just ignored as it is. So this is just going to be, it's just a monstrosity. And it's just absolutely shocking to see what they think is a perfect thing to put there. Right now is already bigger than what was there when I was growing up. There are actual houses that were there. And so it's just really disappointing that Clemson would even consider putting something like that in a neighborhood right on top of people's homes. It's really, really very upsetting and horrible. I live just on the next corner at 101 Folger Street. My mom is at 110 Folger Street. And it's just where I grew up, and it's just appalling that this is even being considered, quite honestly.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Gaye Eitmiller. I was made in Clemson. I was born in Anderson. And Clemson has been a part of my life for almost sixty years. My grandparents lived, one set of my grandparents lived on Riggs Drive. The other set of my grandparents lived on Strawberry Lane. My mom and dad live in the house that my grand, my dad's parents built in nineteen fifty-five. I grew up coming to Clemson. I grew up walking up Strawberry Lane, walking down Oak Street, walking down the little alleys and all that kind of stuff to go to downtown Clemson and buy whatever souvenirs. My children, who are now grown, also grew up coming to my grandparents' house, walking downtown. My daughter, who is about to turn thirty-two, thought it was the best thing in the world when she came to visit her grandma and pop that she could ride her bike down to the city of Clemson and spend the money that grandma and pop gave her on her Clemson gear. Hopefully, in the near future, I'll be a grandmama too, and I'll be able, well, I'll probably be scared to let my children walk to downtown Clemson if we have this monstrosity on Pine Street because we will have to go along there. And this is, is crow flies less than a half a mile from where my mom and dad live, where I grew up, where I call my family home, all in the name of money. It is not about money. It's about the people that lived here, who grew up here, who love this town and want to be here. It's not about the students. The students didn't elect the city council. The residents elected the city council.
About one more minute.
And it just sickens me. I just, it just sickens me to think that y'all think it's a good idea to ruin a residential neighborhood with two seven-story buildings or however many tall, however tall they are. I drive back to my mom and dad's house all the time. The students don't stop at the stop signs. They don't stop at the red lights. They go, whoop, 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 whoop. That's what they do. I see it all the time. I've taken pictures of it. And y'all want to put however many more students up in there? Seven hundred and something? It'll be a nightmare for the city of Clemson. Who cares about the money it brings to the city? The city of Clemson is about the people that live here and the people that love this place. I live out by Daniel High School.
Thank you so much for your comments.
I'm asking to turn the heat up.
Ma'am, I checked. I did not get your email. I apologize.
That's okay. I got it right here.
Okay.
My name's Karen Frey. I am running operations at the SO Club. I'm here to talk about the infrastructure, number one. Our toilets have backed up on game days. Clemson tells me it's my side. People that I have to call and spend hundreds and hundreds of dollars tells me it's on Clemson's side. I have to put in thousands and thousands of dollars of water filters because of the sediment that is in the lines. Okay? And that's just all the stuff that's been built back there now. I don't know about math, but I'm looking. Seven hundred and twenty-eight beds, correct? And how many parking spots?
Three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty. Thirty-one of them be what? For your retail. Restaurant gets put in there. Table of six, all driving separate cars. There's six spaces. So where's, you know, when that restaurant filled up, where they going to go? They're going to go up the side of Pine. They're going to go try to park down the SO. And I'm telling them. So I'm going to make everybody mad because I'm good at that. But it is what it is. I see it with the condos next door. I see it with the condos behind us. You know, you're talking about balconies. That's police. I've seen them throw cans at them on the balconies, all kind of stuff. You can say it here in your reality, and you're here to build it. I get that. But them selling it and what they're going to get out of it, these kids are going to bring their cars. Don't care what you tell them. You can tell if there's two hundred parking spots, all seven hundred and twenty-eight are going to bring a car because none of them work. Mama and daddy provide for everything. They don't care about this town. They come here to go to school because mama and daddy's paying for it. They come here to drink because they can. And they can walk down the streets, and they can throw trash in our yards and wake up every day. Or I'm trying to sleep because I had to work till 3:00 a.m. and I can't because they're having a party behind us or beside us. Enough is enough, really. Enough is enough. And you can say, it's just, it's not feasible, what you're thinking. You're here to build it. I get it. Somebody else is there to sell it. It's not going to hold. It's not going to hold. I mean, you do not have enough parking. You sit there, you, the reality is too many beds, not enough parking. The traffic telling to turn north, they're not, they're not going to do that. These kids come in this town and take over, okay? They do what they want to do. Do you know who mama and daddy is? How many times we hear that? We don't care. We don't care. They're seasonal. And I get it. They bring a lot of money in this town. I do get that. But we sustain this town. We're here around the clock. We have the businesses paying the sales tax, paying the hospitality tax. Okay? The reality is, is just not there. It's not there with the traffic and the infrastructure. So zoning, it's totally different zoning now. You're bringing retail. So are you going to open up the can of worms to make all that back there retail? That be the case? Let them come by at all. Pay us for our houses to get out. I mean, what do, you know, you're opening up a can of worms to do that. So you're bringing retail into a housing development subdivision, what neighborhood, what do you, I mean, I just can't con. And let's talk about the traffic again. Are we going to do another study? Is there another traffic study set up?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Because it definitely needs to be set up for when these kids are here because that living on Pine Street, you got those little apartments right there, the condos down the side.
I say August thirtieth. Do I get a second?
Yeah. They already pulled in this way and parked out into the road. So next door, that tow truck stays busy. People parking. Parents are getting towed that pay for those condos because they go and visit their child. And they're only allowed so many parking spaces. But it's, it's just in and out because I'm telling you, I don't care what you got. You know, I can sit there and tell every one of my employees, I need you to carpool on a game day. Do you think they listen to me? No. So it's, it's like talking to a freaking wall, talking to kids nowadays. So I'm just here to, I did not think that it's the infrastructure over there is going to hold it. I don't think the traffic is going to hold it, and I think they are running people out of their homes that have lived there most of their life because most of those people back there are seniors, and that hurts my heart. That hurts my heart.
Thank you for your comments. I would ask that when people come up, if you would address the planning commission. And a lot of that has to do with our microphone and people online because we get comments saying they can't hear. The developers can hear you, but address us with your comments, please. Please don't have side conversations. Please don't. We need to be respectful. I understand things can get emotional, but we need to be respectful to everybody. So I would ask, would please do not have side conversations. Dr. McGuire.
I'm Fran McGuire. Don't start my tongue here, though. I think I sent you questions.
You sent me.
They were both, they were combined for both settings.
It said three ninety-eight on them, and you sent me two of them, and I will read them at the next one, but.
Okay, not sponsored. So what I'm going to do is do half now and half later. Gee, I'll get sixty. So Saturday mornings, part of my walk, and I walk every day. I walk through downtown Clemson, which I had not done in a long time. College Avenue from ninety-three to one twenty-three. Walk down North Clemson. It is, it is fascinating what has happened because of the way we've chosen to build. I would say negatively fascinating, ultimately positive, but it was astonishing to see. It is clearly just a canyon, a canyon of residents with very little, I think, that could still be a community. And so I was thinking as I was walking, here's three thoughts, and I'm going to read these. Stephen Covey, as you all know, famously has said, "The main thing is to keep the main thing the main thing." I heard tonight the opposite of that in every other meeting just about. We talked about building design and Clemson play and communicating the environment. All that's important. That is not the main thing, though. That is other things. That's like taking your dog to the vet because he has liver cancer and spending the whole time talking about flea power. Flea power's important. That's not the main thing. Here's what I think is the main thing. It's whether we, as a community, are willing to give some of our property, or in this case, the zoning of that property, to someone who wants to do something totally not fitting what we, as a community, have said over and over and over again we don't want. You folks are great.
Hi.
You're here for.
Dr. McGuire, please address us.
Those people are great, but they're in business, and they should be in business. But they're not in our community. So I'm urging us that we have to start asking, if we approved this, what's in it for our city? And what will I do to our city? To me, that is the main thing. It's important what buildings look like. It's important how much parking space there is. It's important that it is in harmony with the environment. It's important it gets people angry. All that matters. But I would urge you, I would urge you to have the main thing be the main thing, both issues tonight. And to me, the main thing is pretty simple. Do you want to approve as stewards of the city two buildings that when they're combined will have more people in them than eight percent of the total residents in the city of Clemson? Our population's about seventeen thousand. These two buildings are about, what is it, fourteen hundred? Over eight percent. That's the main thing. Are you willing, are we willing to sacrifice zoning because it's important enough to have these student developments in here? And I love students. I would not be without them. But that's the issue. Are you willing to trade zoning and density for whatever? Part two, when it comes up later, I'm going to try to figure out what is the thing we need to get back out of this? Please, please, remember the main thing is the main thing, to keep the main thing because that's all that matters at this point.
Dr. McGuire, we're here. Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Eleanor Hare. I live in downtown Clemson at 202 Crest Circle. Back in past years, the city council would not take a commercial up against a residential, an R1 residential. They used to require that there be sort of a stepping stone, like maybe apartments that are two stories high or something like that, so you didn't take the commercial right up to the homes. And I wonder if that's still in the books anywhere because we really do need that. The other thing is, I don't know the law on it, but in South Carolina, I have seen where a planned development went in. And the planned development that showed up was not what they, what they thought they were getting. Once they changed the zoning, the planned development could do anything they wanted to do. So I hope you will look into that, whether or not that is the case. And I think I can cite the place where it occurred within the last year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
All right.
This, go back to this slide that has the view of Pine Street. Can we do that? Can you go back to that slide? Okay, well, the view was looking on Pine Street, and you have this, the red brick building, eight stories tall there. Everybody kind of knows that view of Pine Street. What they don't show, and I wanted to point this out, is they show it as if there's nothing around this building. Can it come back up or not?
No, that's not going to work. I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right.
My point is the fact that it's, the residential homes are not shown in that illustration for a good reason. For a good reason. Because you can't put a building that size next to Charles's house. Charles left. But if you showed Charles's house and you showed that eight-story building, you would begin to understand what the project's all about. It's an invasion of my neighborhood. I live at 206 North Clemson. But this is marching into our neighborhood. And so as the lady said earlier.
And so, as the lady said earlier, well, if you want to invade our neighborhood, just come and buy us all out. You want to just buy us out? Because what you're doing is you've just lowered the value of our property. Okay, who wants to buy Charles's house next to an eight-story building? Well, before, it was a very hot property, but after they built it? Well, I don't know, I'd rather not be next to that building. So, what you're doing is you're lowering the prices of the surrounding neighborhood. And what's happened is we lose money because the value of our asset has gone down. So, that's my first point. My second point is, is that the growth of Clemson projection is roughly, is 28,000 people. How much, you're the planning department, how many students are we growing every year at Clemson? What's the increase? I'm asking you, you know what that is?
I can't answer you.
2%? Huh? It's about, it's about 300 or 400 people a year. That's our growth rate. Maybe 500. Some people drop out. Okay, so you look at 500 people per year. Okay, there's 700 units right there. Paul's Diner is 500, 700. The Hub is 1,300. Go down the line, we're putting in 10,000 units, and we're growing at 500 people a year. This is total madness. And you're wrecking my neighborhood, too. I live, my back of my house is on Hedger Lane. That traffic is going to come down there. People walk their baby, kids go walking. You've got traffic flying down Hedger Lane. I'm a gardener. People like to come by and talk to me about my garden. Well, you're not helping the culture because now my backyard has become a highway. Or it used to be a beautiful alleyway, there was dirt when I first came here. So, there's a degradation, a degradation to the neighborhood. And there's, the growth of Clemson doesn't match what the developers are doing. And then you've got AI. Chat GTP came out five yesterday. GTP 5 came out yesterday.
About 15 seconds.
Excuse me. In GTP 5, Microsoft laid off 9,000 people. This planning department never talks about AI. AI is the biggest thing since fire. And we're acting like AI is not here.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Next.
I'm Stephanie Platt. I live on 103 Mountain View Lane. I was just wondering, is there any workforce housing in this development?
No.
Okay. So, strictly students? So, doesn't the city have a problem with workforce housing? I mean, was, I mean, why aren't we focusing on workforce housing, you know, instead of student housing?
That's not what the developer brought forward.
So, strictly students?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else about Pine Street? I want to give everybody the opportunity for comments, input. So, at this time, seeing then more comments, we will close this public information session. Commissioners, thoughts, comments, questions to be addressed from your purview at this time. Commissioner Hyatt?
Commissioner Hyatt? Couple of things. Karen mentioned the sediment in lines and the sewer system. In a planned development, the development gives something back to the city. So, what, what's, I mean, I'd like to see, if she's having, if she's, if they're a business in our city and they're having trouble with their lines, and when they call independent contractors, they're saying, this is the city's problem. I would like to know if the planned development can help solve a business owner's problem in, right there. And y'all can think about that. And then Gaye mentioned kids walking downtown Clemson. And I live over by Clemson Presbyterian Church, so over near Vineyard Road. And I have four children. They have all biked and walked to Wendy's from my house, thanks to the Green Crescent Trail and Clemson University. So, I guess I would like to explore sidewalks and downtown. I mean, I, just some things that the residents can get back, where they can benefit, I guess, from this, to see if it's something that we want to entertain, I guess. Those were my two takeaways that I had coming into the meeting and that were validated by resident comments.
Commissioner Rice?
None tonight.
None tonight? Commissioner Cunigan?
No, I don't have, I think Chaney had some good points. I was going to ask about the sewer as well, so I think that's a good question. I'd like to hear what the, if it's more of an old line sort of situation that can be repaired during construction.
Yeah.
You know, something like that. I mean, there's always two sides every story, but they're at the bottom of the hill. There's certainly sediment at the bottom of those pipes. That's not hard to figure out. And so, it would be good to explore that a little bit more. I mean, I do understand why it's going where it is. I do think it's understandable in some respects about you're taking down student, you're putting back up student. I would like to see it a little bit smaller, but, you know, it's not my money, so.
I'll talk with our utilities director and have a answer for that next time.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Crowley?
I mean, it's, I know as part of the building, they're going to have to do at least what affects them for upgrading lines and things over there. I don't know if there'd be a stretch, if we could extend it out, but the, I don't know. It's the, it's a mix. And I don't know that it's any concrete question I can put, but it's the, it's the size being right there with that no separation. I mean, yeah, we're doing the landscape buffer instead of the parking back there. But it's not like it's stepped down towards the neighborhood. I know it works uphill versus anywhere else, but I would like to see it not, I don't know, in words, as much right there kind of looming over. As, you know, Clemson next mentions downtown west, but it's kind of highlights more along 93. And so, I feel like to push this back there and not even just a denser R4 development. There needs to be a lot of justification for that because you are, if you had the, if you had this on 93, and then an R4 behind it, and then the neighborhood, you could justify that as a step down. I guess the question would be, to shorten it, is just kind of how, if there's any way to lessen the impact on the surrounding neighborhood. I don't know, I haven't come up with anything short of making it shorter, but if you guys got something, that'd be great here.
Any other comments? So, one of the things that I would challenge you guys to do, what I heard tonight was step downs, view from the neighborhoods. What I also heard is concerns about the economic impact in that neighborhood and individuals. I heard concerns about traffic. I heard concerns about parking and the number of students. I heard concerns, and some of this may be able to address, some of you may not be able to, workforce housing, things like that. I think there's some other answers from the planning department that can come out about that, that this is not appropriate form for us because this is a forum for different feedback. Heard concerns about safety about walking, safety about riding, the width of sidewalks, safety about traffic, concerns. I heard that. I heard concerns about the infrastructure in different areas and the impact that that's going to be. I heard concerns, the overall impact in the neighborhood as terms of values and what that would do. I'm sure there are more concerns that you guys have heard. I think at this point, that what we need to do is to go back and to be able to talk with staff, and then probably do have a work session to work through and call those. Is a work session something you guys would be amenable to?
Yeah.
And so, not that I hear everything, I hope I've summarized what people were saying here. I really do hope I've summarized that. If I haven't, I'm sure that we'll get that. Again, I do want to apologize if emails weren't sent. Karen, I will personally get with you and have you send them to me, and I will personally make sure that those emails get to you. And we will make sure that we update you on any other comments we have. I do appreciate you coming here and your stab at the first overall comments that were given, and I'm grateful for that. And appreciate that. We will get something out to find when work sessions are doable. And I think in responses, it's best to analyze and take a look at it, and listen, and think about it, and come up with appropriate responses and ask staff to be working through with that. Are there any comments from staff that you heard that we missed? Thank you very much for this section of the meeting. We will call this closed unless there are any other questions or comments from you guys. I will give you opportunity. And we will plan on a work session at some point. So, I'm going to call that part closed. Thank you very much. So, let me pull back over. I'm going to go ahead, and we're trying to get our electronics back up. And so, before we move, I'm going to call a five-minute recess. And Kelly's not here, so we are live on YouTube. I would ask people to, if we're going to talk or something like that, to do it in the lobby so it's not on YouTube. I'll text you after. That's fine. I'm going to tag, I'll text you after we're done. We're calling back into session. Thank you for the break. At this time, we do have an action item on our agenda tonight. And I am going to, first and foremost, how this will go is, with an action item, we're going to ask if there are any updates, give them time to put up everything that they have here. And then, we will have a comment section time for this. First, we will read all the comments that we have received, and some of them did not say 201 Pine, and maybe should have, they said 398, or boat developments, but we will make sure that those are read, so everybody hears that. And then, we will have a time for public comment on the action item, and then it will be an action step. So, what I would like to do at this time is to ask staff, are there any update reports, changes commissioners should be aware of? Okay. I'd like to ask a member from LV Collective if you'd like to update us on your proposal. There's 10 minutes here.
Good evening. I'll keep this short today. I want to start with a timeline. We're back here on Planning Commission for a action item, hoping for a positive outcome and rolling into city council process after this. We'll present some small updates. We were here a week ago. From a site plan perspective, there's not much change. We've heard some feedback, which we'll present in a minute. An update from a metric standpoint, this is where the project stands currently. Last time, there were some questions about the totals, which we totaled here to the right for clarity. No real changes from last time, just totals added. Last week, we had the VAR with us. Heard great feedback on the front college side, so we haven't really made any changes there. All rendering seen here were the same that we showed last week, here in entry, a view of our lobby straight on, and a view from our, from looking from college avenue into the building. The majority of the comments were more along the back. This view here on Strode and Riggs, this is where we were a month ago. Last week, we came and presented, we had heard, a month ago, we heard concerns about height. So last week, we came and presented a reduction in height, a two-story reduction, creating a step down. This reduction, as you can see, is deep, is over 100 feet at its deepest, and two stories in depth in height. Today, a week later, we're presenting, we'd heard from the VAR, some concerns about the facade in the back, some articulation, looking to break down the scale. So the Niles Bolton team, the architects, have done a quick study here on how this can start to address and break down the scale in the back. Again, this is one week of work, so we'll keep developing this. This is a flavor of where we're heading. Same another view, where we were a month ago, where we presented last week with a two-story reduction, or step down, and the added articulation of the facade. Last view on the rig side again, a month ago, a week ago, and where we are today. Materials are also changing, some comments from the VAR last week, recommended that we move some of those, some of the brick from the U Center side that no one's going to be able to see, bring it over on this side, so you get to see some more brick and some variation of that brick, giving some interest to this facade as well. Also, some questions about the small parcel. This is an initial, first stab at what the small parcel can start to look like. Again, this has been around for only two weeks at this point, but in the spirit of really following the same vein and the same language that the main building, really complementing the project overall. This we've seen in the past, is again, the height in context, next to U Center to the right, Moda to the left, and you'll see how the project, both south and north parcel, fit within that streetscape on college. Circulation was, the overall diagram has not changed, but there were a lot of questions, or some questions around parking and how that would function. There were also questions last week about the drop-off and pickup. So in here, we'll see, we have studied some options for the drop-off and pickup inside the parking garage, which we'll show in a second. Here, from a site plan perspective, we're still keeping those six parking spaces on Strode. Those are part of the public parking count. The remainder fall within the parking garage. So here, a layout of all three levels of the public parking levels of the garage, the bottom three, to the very right where you enter, and slope down to the left. Hard to see here, but we have identified two locations for public, for drop-off and pickup areas within the garage. One right as you drive into the garage, to the right, another one right next to the breezeway, which is in Level 1, highlighted in yellow. So there's three parking spaces there that could be designated for drop-off and pickup for rideshare. Additionally, there were some questions about turning radii and the dead end on the public parking space last week with the VAR. So we've worked with the architect to grow those spaces, provide ample space for turnaround and backing in and turning back out in case that you reach the end and there's no spaces. So both, you can find those at the very bottom and the very top, still keeping the total of 150 parking spaces, out of which six are outside the garage, the remaining 144 are inside the precast garage. Just a little viewing section very quickly, because it gets kind of confusing. The entry is at that Level 2, to the right, you slope down, and that middle level, that's where the breezeway that takes you out to the street is, providing a very convenient access for any, anyone parking in the public park portion, they're walking up or down only one story within the garage. So very easy to get out of the garage. Lastly, there were also some questions around how the service would function, and some concerns about backing up into college. Here, some exhibits between Kimberly Horn team and Niles Bolton architects on how the trash truck clearances would work. The maneuvering of a trash truck, which would be the largest truck we would see in this service drive to the right, would enter through the garage driveway, take a right, and on the service drive would pull bends, and then back out, without having to back out into college. So back out into the drive and back into, get on its way. So that same drive would be used for any large truck deliveries at different times, right? That is available for those needs. That covers the concerns, some of the concerns that were raised last week, and we just want to wrap it up with our community benefit slide, on just to highlight the 150 public parking spaces that this project brings to downtown Clemson. 9,400 square feet of retail, out of which 2,400 will be open day one with our Daydreamer Cafe. The remainder would be third-party retail, and about 280 feet, linear feet of stream preserved by this project in the middle and seen in the rendering. concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, I'm going to end. Just want to make sure I get it. The big thing that we want to make sure that we do, this is an action item. All commissioners, we have had our initial presentation, we had a workshop, then we had another workshop, and then we are here with the changes that they've made. So... Do any commissioners have any comments that they would like to make at this time?
Resident comments?
Yes.
Would you ask?
She said yes. Yes.
Yeah. I wanted to hear the resident comments. I may have comments, but...
Okay.
Yeah, I can go before or after, Karen?
Well, the, we will do that. Let me go ahead and go to this, and start with our resident comments. I'm going to read the ones that have come in by email. And we like to do that. On Wednesday, July 30th, we received a comment from Alan and Kathy Hodges, 100 Strode. The application for this project states that site design incorporates preservation of one of three existing active streams, with remaining two streams to be thoughtfully relocated to support overall site functionality and environmental integrity. We asked how you're going to do that. June 23rd workshop indirectly answered the question, in their opinion. The presenter focused on how the process heavily regulated by U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, ensuring the commission LV Collective be working with Kimberly Horn, quote, "the best civil engineering expert in the areas." As we understand from the schematics uploaded July 24th, one stream will enter a head wall funneling into underground cauldron at 104 Riggs Drive. The pipe then continues around the periphery of the building until it empties into the stream flowing from our lot, where it becomes a visible amenity of the PUD. We assume the others enter the concrete stormwater vault. Their picture shown here of Strode, pictures shown that we've seen before of where their house is, 100-foot distance from the PUD. The 100 Strode home was highlighted. Consider over 50 foot is measured on the property. Maintain a dense privacy and noise buffer. The width of Riggs is another 20 feet. PUD setback at this section, in their opinion, 25 to 26 feet. Of that setback, five feet will be new sidewalks, leaving 20 foot for green space. The Moda setback on Knox is 25 feet. Walk the alley and judge how much neighborhood protection that provides. Use this perspective to imagine what a 25-foot setback on Riggs would be like at the proposed eight-story height. A caution regarding the concept drawings Mod presented, two stories, the entire length of the alley with the garage completely underground because of the change in the grade from college and final product resulted in Knox Road being near, nearing four stories with the garage exposed. Believe our neighborhood expected the PUD process would result in green space buffer similar to the area between the U Center, 104 Earl and Cold Spring subdivision. Bixby and the Hub do not directly bore your ANER 20 area. We feel planning director's comment, quote, "we, the city, don't have a current development this far away. In fact, we don't have anything 100-foot away from a house over Steigs." The 398 building's actual setback from Riggs, it ignores the fact our home is sited on two lots, 101 and 2, permitting our very deep side lot. The first workshop indicated large mature trees along Riggs would be preserved. The schematic shows many marked with X will be cleared. And they cite a photo shown by LV Collective in that presentation. We've labeled in yellow our 100 Strode home, its deep side lot beside it, and the three emitted R20 home icons on Riggs Drive, existing student housing setbacks and rigs are shown in their yellow lines. Ideally, the preserved stream and green space would wrap around the entire PUD. It should be, could be schematics, but we felt thoughtful relocation to support environmental integrity meant the other streams will be visible. The workshop implied thoughtful relocation means conforming to required construction regulations. The presenter contends the city removed the flood threat to our lot by replacing the undersized culvert bisected by sewer line under Riggs last summer. That being said, can stormwater management be considered a direct public benefit of the PUD? The developer justified including 104 Riggs in the PUD by stating the majority of the R20 lot can be used for very deep setbacks. Yes, the space allocated for emergency vehicle access increases setback distance, but we conclude neighborhood screening is not a significant element of 398 design. In addition to discussed height step-down, we request developer revisited our privacy stone wall along the sidewalk, similar to dockside. If it begins at emergency vehicle access, terminates at the point where the underground pipe enters a stream, the desired view of the stream will be obstructed. A low neighborhood monument signed at the corner of Riggs. stream will be obstructed. A low neighborhood monument signed at the corner of Riggs could offer a complimentary transition to the rock work at Catherine Smith Park. Again, that was submitted on Wednesday, July 30th, after one workshop before the second workshop on Wednesday, August 6th, from Alan Hodges. The same address stated, "The August 5th Planning Committee workshop was productive. BAR added valuable comments that address our setback and screening concerns. The College Avenue frontage design was complimented and the developer was asked to consider wrapping elements of the facade around the entire project. This speaks to the importance of building aesthetics when a deep green space buffer is not feasible. We're very pleased to learn BAR is, will be involved in the future PD planning workshops. Thank you for reviewing our uploaded material. We do not see it as a need to be included in the public reading at August 11th meeting. We are required to read these."
I just wanted to thank you.
No, ma'am. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure you knew that, you know, we felt that the workshop was productive and that it addressed the first comment that we said.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'm just required anything that comes in to reread it, and you stated that in your second letter.
You didn't have to take that much time, but thank you.
It's okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. We do read all of them. We do take it seriously. We do appreciate your feedback. Received Saturday, July 12th, from Bob Healy, "What retail is realistically expected for 5,000 square foot available at proposed three of one Pine Street? And this should have been in Pine Street. It was stapled into my 398. I apologize for that. What does 1,000 square feet of retail back of the house mean exactly?" He's at 140 Folger. What I can answer to that, and I do need to, is 5,000 square feet and 1,000 in the back. 1,000 back of the house means things you don't see if there was a kitchen or things like that, even though that doesn't apply here. So it does ensure depth. Instead of just saying 5,000 retail, it provides access for maintenance in the back of the house, and that's what that means. I apologize. It's out of order here, but I do feel the need to read it. We did receive from Ms. Cheryl Combs, and that was on Sunday, August 23rd, 2025. Have heard Planning Commission members ask how 398 project would benefit Clemson. Of the three replies, only one, in her opinion, had validity. 150 public parking spaces in the downtown area. The question is, what is the cost of those spaces to the rest? And Clemson has commissioned, considered the impact of the new approved and proposed developments upon city budget and infrastructure. Who's going to pay for the employees? Need to demand the kiosk for the 150 public spaces. The three streams at Traverse project have been discussed. However, no mention's been made by the developer about plans for sewer lines that traverse the property. How is addition approximately 700 residents combined with 2,000 other new residents impacting sewer and water supplies? Would an expansion utility system be required? And how many new employees be needed? What would be the impact on the city police force ancillary teams? How many additional city employees be required? Planning Commission has figured these new demands and says that she may be aware of the cost for these proposed parking spaces. If it hadn't been calculated, perhaps Planning Commission should delay approval until such figures are known. We will be able to answer that here in a moment. We do know the answer to those questions. What I would urge people, when there is a workshop, please attend the workshop. If you do not, if you're not able to attend, please watch the workshop. Many of those questions were answered. In fact, every single question from the public input session was answered there. I would urge that, if that doesn't work, this is your planning department. Please call them. They will be happy to update you and sit with you and do that. So it is important, and we will answer that. Ms. Eva Henry on July 13th, and I'm going to read this again, just out of respect. This is one that's already been read before. It's a duplicate that was sent in. I read in the journal about the proposal to allow proposed 723 beds and 2,003 units, or 203 units with 5,000 square feet of retail. Again, this goes to back, this was in my packet, not separated for Pine Street. "You've already proposed five or six-floor building of College Avenue. Can I ask where all these people are going to park?" Which was brought up tonight. There's also one building that's proposed that's not been stated. I hope it might be built. Where is everybody going to park? And Ms. Eva Henry. Martha Irving on August 4th, I've attached a brief memo, the Planning Commission regarding the updated proposal and the inappropriateness for the site to be developed. And in here, the memo says, "Planning Commission, please vote this current proposal down in hopes of keeping any sort of small, non-student residential area part of the attractiveness of being close to downtown Clemson. Please note, developer purchase residence to include in the high-density student apartment developing assets now part of the neighborhood, not appropriate. Developers want more students living in the front three acres of this area than the neighborhood they're approaching. Not appropriate and shouldn't happen. From the very beginning, the proposal residents request a smaller footprint, both in size and numbers of students planned. However, it appears the developer basically moved some of this Lego parts across the street for the same influx of students right in this small area. No way it should be considered a win for the city of Clemson residents and developers presenting as PUD. Lighting and noise issues not addressed. Environmental impact of bringing the creek flow through Riggs Drive residential area not addressed." Thank you, Martha Irving. I would note in that, that that was on Monday, August 4th, prior to all of the adjustments in where all of those issues were addressed by LV Collective. Again, in the workshop, that was August 5th. That is available online. You did see those different things highlighted, such as lighting. BAR was involved in the meeting, and BAR had, that is in their purview. And as ordinance for PUD is written, it is contingent approval for BAR, as they walk through that, if it were to be approved. The next comment comes from, is on Sunday, August 3rd, and it's from Shannon Sharkey. "I'm writing as a homeowner that will be impacted by the development 398 College Avenue. Concerns that, although the members of our neighborhood frequent Planning Commission meetings, the builders propose a high-rise 398, have not adequately addressed our concerns. I have concerns that the building's out of character in both light and design with the rest of the neighborhood and town. Concerned that the historic house in front of the neighborhood be torn down and replaced with generic rental property. I'm concerned the high-density building will impact the streams that are located on the property causing flood and a loss habitat for herons, amphibians, reptiles that live there. I'm concerned about additional traffic that will now use the neighborhood as a cut through increasing. Concerns about density of cars on our roads creating unsafe roads for our children and ourselves. I have concerns this bill will not have value to committee, community, and the benefits anyone other than residents of the building. I have concerns that only playing commercial property is a coffee shop, of which we already have wonderful look at coffee shops. I'm concerned that we've not seen the impact of motor of the hub on traffic density or congestion downtown, or stowed the need for this development before moving forward with this proposal." Thank you for listening to our concern. It's Shannon Sharkey. Again, I point out, this was on August 3rd, before any of the concerns that had been listed out, had been worked on in the workshop. Every concern, whether it was to our, to what we wanted, was addressed, and you can see it there. The next set of public comments that we have is, let's see, Nathan Clark, 81025, "Dear Commissioners, in my opinion, the PC should not approve those unevenants that would allow two PDs, 398, and 210 Pine." That's the ones that I had in the packet that weren't listed to both. "We need to wait and see what effect that the hub has on traffic, parking, the economy before allowing two more PDs that collectively total 1441 beds. Honestly, enough's enough. Local residents should have it to endure this. It's so disheartening to watch these huge, tiring buildings. Make me not want to go downtown at all. Please help us, residents. I thank you for your service and consideration of my comments." Nathan, Nathan Clark. The Shelley Greer, August 11th, this morning, 11:17, "Regarding proposed plan development of 398 College Avenue and 201 Pine Street, I'm urging the city to pause on all plan developments at these locations till we see the effects of the hub and also the apartment complex across from Bixby. These are enormous complexes, impact our city resources, traffic congestion, beauty of our little town. Please no more large-scale student apartment complexes in our downtown area." Again, that was Shelley Greer, 204 Willis Street. The next one that we have, set of comments, this one came in August 11th at 12:22 PM, 116 Riggs Drive. Alan Grubb. And there was no attachment. There was no comments. It was just an email. And that's what we received. Monday, August 11th, 225, 2025 at 2:47 PM, 209 Noelwood Drive, Clemson, Vetpool. "I just want the Planning Commission to take a pause, slow down on some of these new proposal projects. Maybe we should possibly try to focus more on planning for our actual residents, if just for a bit." The next one came in for, from Lee Marisi, comment, "I'm opposed to the proposed development at College Avenue in Strode Circle. I've tried to attach a PDF file with my reasoning to this webpage. Let me do, if you don't see it, thanks. It did not attach. We did let them know that we did not receive it this afternoon." And so they did send it in. "I write in opposition to development proposed for the corner of College Avenue in Strode Circle. Let's see how the current buildings work out after completion of few years of full occupancy before adding yet more stories of student housing to the town. Remember Highway 123 on the O'Conne side of the lake. If it were not for continued growth at Clemson University, there'd be no need for any such buildings in downtown Clemson. Developers who are tapping the returning alumni commuting to Greenville Market build detached homes. Both those markets will negatively affect if Clemson downtown becomes impossible, which it gives every impression of becoming. Someone who's everywhere out into and out of the home neighborhood will be capped by multi-story student housing units at intersections. I'd be very happy to be proven wrong." Let's find out first how the current construction impacts the town. For continued growth at university, I propose that the city and developers work with the university to increase on-campus housing. Single-story duplexes next to Highway 93 downhill from the relatively new Doohill units are very low-density and old, a high-density development bigger than the proposed one could easily be built where the old duplexes are to improve minimum campus and preservation of town feeling in downtown. When current leadership team at the university first arrived, they said they were surprised Clemson U was building the Doohill dorms instead of leasing land to a developer for 30 years in a big-to-rent deal. So I asked the city, I'm taking broader kind of planning. Think about how to retain the town feeling downtown and go with developer to university in purpose. High-density on-campus housing on campus." Received from Martha Irving, August 11th, 2025 at 1:26 PM. "Please for no more high-density development." Nathan Clark, comment on 8/11 at 12:00 AM. "In my opinion, PC should not approve those unevenants that would allow for the two PDs." Again, this is another one. 398 and 210 College to move forward. "We need to wait and see what effect the hub has on traffic, parking, the economy before allowing two more PDs that collectively totally 1441 beds. Honestly, enough's enough. Local residents shouldn't have to endure this." And then we received a comment at 12:46 PM. This is from Shelley, Sheila Hogan. I apologize. "And it's, my husband and I are unable to attend Planning Commission tonight. On our behalf, I'm taking time to express our serious concern about both these proposed developments. Would like our Planning Commission members stand strong against both if of the, both if of these proposed developments. We have so many concerns. Continue to add a large number of beds without parking to support those residents. How the increased traffic impact the two areas of infrastructure? Is it adequate? You should know the many concerns of our city residents. Please stand up to developers and represent the residents by turning down the large developments, at least for now, until we can see the results of the hub and the development next to Hubbard and Young, Edwards, Jonesville. We urge you to listen to the citizens." Shelley Gear, "Regardless of proposed plan development at 201 Pine Street and 398, emergency pause all plan developments at these locations till we see the effects of the hub and apartment complex across from the Bixby. These are enormous complexes and will impact our city Received a comment, August 11th, 2025 at 3:52 PM. "The attached file contains my comments for tonight's PC meeting. The comments apply to by request for resounding of PDs. In case of commissioners, we'd like to read through the entire blog. Here's a link, a link that was given on publicsquare.wordpress.com." We did, in fact, read the blog, and those comments are, "On Saturday, I've varied my usual morning walk, and instead of being on campus, I walked the length of Covina Avenue from Highway 93 up to 123 in order to get a sense of impact. Such behemoths in our living environment. My sense of conclusion of the walk was that these developments are not necessarily a good fit for the city, and they're draining our community spirit. Combine the number of beds. Just to give you a sense of magnitude of projects, 1441, which is not best to approximately 8% of the total population of the city of Clemson. Specific thoughts I had during my walk." Stephen Covey's quoted, for his admonishment, that the main thing is to keep the main thing the main thing. Many have discussed about the two proposed developments and other plan developments revolved around things like building design, parking space, spaces, setbacks, noise, et cetera. Those are important, but they're not the main thing at this point. The main thing is whether we're willing to give up our land, or at least our zoning of that land for high-density housing in our city. And if so, what is it? What is it in it for us? It's important to us to keep focused on what's important and what the main thing is. What is the development doing for our city that's essential to our well-being and quality of life, but also what's the development doing to our city that is deleterious and negatively impacts our well-being and quality of life? Everything else is secondary. Number two, we need to thoroughly examine the presumed benefits of giving our spaces to the developers who purposed to maximize their profits. For example, one rationale I have heard as a benefit of every housing, high-density housing development is that it will bring money to the conference of the city. That's compelling reason, least on first blush. However, the question is not whether it brings in money. The question is whether it's sufficient justification. It's worth borrowing the quality of life of our residents as part of a real estate transaction. I assume, maybe incorrectly, that a few would support selling Nettles Park at any price to a developer seeking to build the next Patrick Square. Regardless of how much income it would generate for the city, most would be skeptical and find it ludicrous that a developer would even make such a request. I think we would be equally skeptical of any offer to buy a piece of our city. I think we should let the city breathe for a while before making any more decisions about high-density housing. about high density housing. There's value in waiting the completion of the hub and giving it more time to percolate before approving any additional high density housing projects. I don't think anyone can predict the hub effect, positive and negative, on things such as traffic policing, resident use of amenities and impact on Labyrinth Park. Let's wait and see what the future brings before committing to more. That was asked at 4:41 PM. Received another comment from Dr. Fran McGuire. Public meetings, public comment notes, comments for tonight's meeting on Saturday, I've very my usual walk, instead of being on campus, I walk the length of.
You just read, you just read the whole thing.
Oh, well, they're two different, they're, they came in at two different times, so I'm required to read everything that comes in. I didn't know it was the same one, I thought it was a different part of it.
It's the same.
Okay, so please understand everybody, one of the things in these public comments that we've done, we passed it last meeting, I've taken the liberty here in this comment section to go ahead and provide that. It will be outlined on the agenda because of the depth and breadth of all of the things. These planning commissioners here do take everything in comment session very, very seriously. We have worked, but we do have obligation through the state statute, the state laws, the way that we are to consider things. So as far as public comments go and as far as even developers go, our deadline is a hard steadfast the Friday before the meeting at 12 noon for any comments. We did read these because that was not published on the agenda, even though it was approved at the last planning commission meeting. Planning commission is bound, not, please, no talking and comments at this point between each other, please. This is important of what we're saying. The planning commission by state law is, has different powers and duties and is required to have an outline set of bylaws. It was amended because it is very, very, very important that everybody have sufficient time to see all of these comments. And so many of these comments that came in today were the first time that the comments commissioners have been able to see them. And so that's why we're asking for it. It's not punitive in nature, it's not any other way. It's to get people involved in the process so everybody can know that due consideration at that time if they cannot attend the meeting is done. And so that's why we do that. But anyway, those are the written comments that came in during that period of time. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on the agenda item? If you can come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. As a reminder, and this is a reminder, each member of the public right now will have three minutes. What I am going to ask, if these concerns have been expressed, that you state that you agree. So would you keep time for us?
Okay, thank y'all gentlemen. I think you should delay the vote. The planning people here have not really told anything about 400 College. They barely have an image of it. Apparently this is like an afterthought to them. They had to buy the property discounts as a package deal. We started off with two buildings, 48 beds, flats and townhouses, surface parking. Next time they had 50 beds, one building, surface parking, same flats and townhouses. And now magically we have a five-story building, 130 beds and a little bit of quasi-retail. It could be an amenity, depends on how it works out there. So one thing about this, apparently it's just, they don't have any facade issues. They say it might be like built, big building. Yeah, maybe we should have BAR come take a look at this and evaluate that. Maybe another workshop would be a good idea before we vote on this project. There's no reason in rushing to a vote just to make their timeline a little bit easier for them. I think the building at 400 should be no higher than three stories. If somehow magically they knocked two stories off the big building, but gained 40 beds in the process by sticking 130 beds on 400, and you guys don't really know a thing about that project. I think what they should do is make it three, three stories and have it made up for one and two beds and try to get something more like graduate students and maybe either young faculty or young city employees in there, since it would be separated from the mass building. As planned, they, or if you don't want to do that, as planned, three beds, they could still have 74 beds, we're down from 130 if they knocked off the top two stories. How senior reason reward them for slicing off two floors of a hideously tall building, but then building another big building? One thing about 400, I believe the planning director said there's 100 feet separated from the big building to my house. Well, this 400 is going to be five story correctly at my front door. That's going to be the first thing I see in neighborhood, be like your, your power plant in your neighborhood. It's going to be my biggest thing right in front of my house. It's going to need some walls, it's going to need some screening, not vegetation, but permanent walls to screen it off. Also, and I think the big building, Bixby, Moda, Ubers, all those are five stories. Why should we allow this thing, because it's causing a hole, to be bigger than five stories?
Good evening, commission members. My name is Shannon Sharkey. My husband, two boys, and I live in the neighborhoods directly behind 398 College. You actually read one of my emails and stated where I said my concerns, and he said that they were addressed in the workshop on August 5th. And so although I've been or made an appointment to attend many of these meetings, I was unable to attend that one. As my husband and I coach a team for the Central Clemson Rec, I were very involved in the community, I work in the schools, we go to church and live downtown. We are currently experiencing disruption to our everyday lives in the form of increased traffic and construction vehicles down our street, loud noise from job sites, and then barriers blocking the main road in and out of our neighborhood. This is all because of the construction of the hub and Moda. These developments have not opened and another large development is being proposed in the same few blocks. I hate to think about how difficult it will be to navigate these roads when there's another set of construction and when the students return. I ask the commission to please consider not approving these requests, but please instead look and see the immediate impact and long-term impact on the current builds that are happening in the downtown area. See if it's going to be unmanageable. Watch to see if the school buses that my children ride and 20 others in the neighborhood ride are able to navigate through the construction. See if the retail space is actually built up and if it's filled with things that benefit the community. And watch to see if the neighborhoods are impacted negatively. And then reevaluate if there is a need for this new build, if it would benefit the community and if it's good for Clemson. I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Stephanie Platt, 103 Mountain View Lane. I just wanted to ask, does this development contain workforce housing?
No.
One, my name is Tom Teasley. I do have a quick question. In the earlier readings, there were some questions asked by, I apologize you not having, you said that they would be answered, but they have not yet been answered. There's a laundry list of questions that were asked specifically on like waterworks and stuff and things and parking and pricing of that.
Every question in the very first that was asked was answered. What I said was, it was answered, we may not have gotten the answer we wanted to get, but it was answered. So there were 18 different questions that the public had during the first one and when they came back to the workshop, they answered them. It may not be the answers that we wanted, but they did answer them.
And so I apologize because I, again, I'm not great at this. There was one that there was a estimate on the 150 parking spots as to the value to that. Do we have a big round number of what that might be?
Yeah, we estimate $30,000 of the space, so I'd say four and a half million.
Four and a half million. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so one, my name is Tom Teasley. I'd like to kind of piggyback on what some of these people said. First and foremost, Commissioner Hyatt on the last thing, so we're looking at a PD. PDs are by nature compromises, they are asking for things. And then what she said, she had a very good comment on PD, you know, what do they give back specifically, what do they give back to, what do the residents get back? I think that's what she said. As we look at this project, briefly touch on the north side, because again, it says 11 days ago, that was townhomes at a parking lot. That is, I believe their slide is different from what we have, 135 beds now, 69 feet, virtually wall to wall, about 85% coverage, nine parking spaces, three compact. Move over to this other side, we are looking at roughly 630 beds, 100-foot buildout that has been talked to ad nauseam, has not changed a lot, 521 spaces, 90 compact, 150 of those spaces are at public. What do we get back? Seems like a pretty big get. Are there any other items or concessions that the city is getting at this time or that the OB is proposing?
Keep, keep going and we'll answer that after your comments.
So we have that question. What we asked in is a PD, is it better or worse? So my question then would be, what is, if we were going under zoning, how many beds could be built under that plan? I guess that's the question that I would ask. That question then would be, is my understanding under current zoning regulations that, how many parking spaces that would be? Is my understanding it is a one-to-one parking space, at which point they'll be divided down to half? So then the question is, I guess the big question that I have is, what is the current buildout under zoning? What could that be? What is that parking? If there is a buy down on half, what is that number? And then can we compare apples to apples to see if in fact we are getting something
Okay. I'm not going to know the answer off the top of my head.
And so I guess my public comment to that would be, if we are voting on this in 30 minutes and this is not answered, how are we to vote on it? And know that we are in fact voting on something that is better or worse?
Thank you guys for listening to me, appreciate you guys going through your plan.
What's your name?
Julian Dickerson, sorry. I'm at 118 Riggs Drive, just up the street from this proposed development. The previous speaker, all of those questions, just two X from me, I don't understand. Voting on something where we don't exactly know all the answers yet, but I am concerned as, as my fellow residents are about parking. Obviously, if there's a one bed to one parking spot proposal, sure, that's fine. But it seems like we want to rely on a lot of walking if we're, if we're going to put something in where we put a lot more students than parking spaces. Maybe we look at deleting College Avenue, where, where we, where we block College Avenue off after football games? If we really want to force people to walk, maybe that's a solution. I don't think anybody's interested in that, but if we really want to force students that don't have parking to walk, then that's what we're probably going to have to do something dramatic like that. So I live downtown, I also go to Fort Hill Presbyterian. I can tell you after, after church clears out, there's a lot of overflow parking from all of the residents in the area, the students in the area, making it difficult for a lot of folks to get to and from church. And it's just an additional concern ahead and thanks for listening to me, appreciate it.
So in terms of the, I want to just give another minute in case somebody decides they I guess my recollection, I know that at one time we showed build by right and I don't know if the details.
We didn't discuss total bedrooms, we talked about height and they could be, you know, three stories and so forth, but we didn't discuss how many bedrooms could be in those three stories and how many, and how many parking spots would go with that
I don't think we would know the parking unless we knew the bed count.
Right, but you could do a pretty accurate count on how many townhomes you could fit in there, three bedroom, three stories tall, I'm sorry, and you could get a general idea, I suppose.
But I think you may be referencing to the entire project, if you were to do by right for the entire project.
Yes, I meant, that's what I meant, going all the way down college, what is currently zoned is three stories. So if you could, which is very high density and you could do that all the way down and parking in the rear that would be on rigs and allow, you know, it would still be developed, just be by right, what would the cities, what is the give to the get, I guess is what Tom's asking. And I think it's a logical question.
I believe we, maybe we saw a graphic of what it would be and then one of the 10-foot setback, but I don't think we ever talked about the beds.
Yeah, mostly it was about height and yeah, that sort of thing. What, and the big pitch was, what we get with by right, theoretically, we weren't going to get parking, but is that worth it? How does the buy, the buy down work to the half? I mean, what's that?
Do you want me to explain how that all works?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm just crunching numbers over here right now.
So basically, the.
When we did a build out analysis, they could theoretically, and you know, obviously there's what you can do and what you would like, would be optimal and everything, they can probably get around 700, 750 beds on the site by, by if they would went full on, like as dense as you could go. Then if you did a 50% buyout of the parking, that's about 375 spaces that you could go down to, because you start out at a one-to-one ratio. It's a one-time fee of $4,000 per space you buy out. So that's about $1.5 million. Then you pay six, well, it's, it's interesting how it works. Then you pay six, well, it's, it's interesting how it works. It actually goes up over time. So for the first year, for the first five years, you pay six hundred and fifty dollars per space for the first five years. So that's around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then it keeps going, and then six to ten years, it's seven hundred dollars per space. Then eleven to fifteen years, seven hundred and fifty dollars per space and so on, up into thirty years where it goes up to nine hundred dollars per space.
So it's continuous revenue?
Continuous revenue.
But it's not.
Thirty, it's capped thirty years or something.
But it's a cap of the total revenue over that period of time to one point five?
No, that is your one-time, that is the day-one.
That's the day-one ticket price.
Yep. And then you're getting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then it caps out at thirty years.
If we build by right, we don't get the Clemson corridor plan implementation east of college.
Correct. Their proposal is to bring the, go all the way from.
Stroud to Keith, yeah.
Stroud to Keith. They would be expected to do their frontage, but they're going all the way down to Keith. So the question is, I don't know if we would actually implement it because one of the caveats we've kind of promised the community is that we're not gonna implement the downtown corridor plan until we have parking.
So I think what he's saying is that's the other give is going, having the ability with the parking spaces is linchpin to implement the downtown corridor plan. And the downtown corridor plan on the east side would be implemented to Keith Street, which is the other give instead of a hundred, the hundred and fifty spaces. So it would go further up, correct?
That is correct.
On that side. So that would be the give, the other give that you were asking for. Well, in front of theirs, I don't know how many feet it is. I don't know. Can you explain?
Yeah, I can, I can explain. So the downtown corridor plan is a plan that would, so for the section we're talking about from Keith, it's different in different areas, but the section we're talking about, so from, you know, where U Center and all that. I don't know if you noticed, but the sidewalk is kind of skinny there. There's no street trees, all that type of thing. So this brings that to a ten-foot wide sidewalk with street trees, then a dedicated bike lane, then a separated, raised median that's about two feet wide before the lane of travel. So it does take away the on-street parking that is currently in front of U Center. But it will then make a much wider sidewalk, a lined street with trees with silverscale and then a bike, dedicated bike lane.
And then that, the parking spaces that you're taking away specifically for U Center is?
Six.
Well, six.
Maybe eight, yes.
Yeah, there's, well, there's, I don't, I don't, maybe, but yeah, there's.
And then I apologize because I'm not correct with this thing. So could you give me a total, is there a total number of, when we talk about the, as a price point of rental basically for buy-down? Over a thirty, you got a thirty cap number, only part of the space could be completely buy-right?
I'm sorry, what are you asking me?
Tell them what they would pay for maximum buy-out.
Oh, the total thing? Oh, I don't have that all worked out. It would take me a little bit to get.
But if you could get all seven hundred spaces by right, why wouldn't you do it?
Why wouldn't you?
Because it's a space.
Hold on, hold on. Let's finish this part and then we'll have Commissioner comments of what you're saying. That way everybody understands and we don't get caught in a discussion. That way, I want to make sure everybody hears and gets clarity because it doesn't need to be confusing.
Are we supposed to go back and forth with residents?
But it was an ask and that's what I was asking him. That's why we will have our turn for a comment. It's not appropriate for discussion that way in what we do, so.
Okay. What am I answering?
Well, what we were answering is, the first part of the question had been, what is?
What's the total after thirty years?
Okay, it's gonna take me a couple minutes if you ask.
That was the question.
So that is a question.
It's gonna be north of ten million.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of money.
Yeah, right.
Over thirty-year period.
Three, so three X what we're getting now. So the city loses six point five million by passing it.
Will you correct me if I'm wrong? Have we had anyone take advantage of that?
No one's ever taken advantage of it.
That's, that's what answers Charlie's other question.
Because, never mind, you know. Of the money.
That's right.
Is it possible for us to add a comment or is this appropriate time?
You can ask to be, come back another time and you withdraw your application.
That's true.
No, it's true, but we need to have some order here. So I'm gonna ask now that we're not doing that that way. If there is, Nathan, I defer to staff at this point, do, if there is a comment, is that valuable in this discussion?
No, I wouldn't think it was appropriate to have a developer speaking at this time.
Okay.
That's just the way I wanted to.
Questions. I think that's the correct way to handle that because we have to defer to staff in that manner. So at this point, Commissioner Kernigan, questions and comments? This is appropriate time?
Yeah, so I, I think my only comment really, well, first, it's my wife's twenty-eighth birthday, so. Yeah, I know. She has a nineteen-year-old. It's amazing. But, you know, very exciting and I'm skipping it for this. So it just shows you how important it is. I, I've kind of, well, I've studied the Clemson Next a lot and I took it upon myself to actually call some people that were, that wrote it. Because I thought Greg's question last week was fantastic even though he wasn't here, that wrote in, about kind of why this parcel wasn't included. And I didn't speak to all of them, but I did speak to a few. And I was interested to hear that they purposely left it off of what should be student housing. And they did that because of the rigs and because of the neighborhood behind. And so there is a, and I asked the ones I talked to to come and they said they would probably go to the next, they would go to the city council if it goes that far. And I went back and I, you know, this page here, it's page forty-nine and it shows kind of the Clemson Next in this area. We're talking about, we've got Hub, we've got Moda, and it asks for fifteen hundred beds after, because Bixby was kind of already in the process then. And so I think we've eclipsed that in the area here that's already called out. So I feel like we've sort of hit our number, hit our mark. And where this specific, part of this specific development is going, it says non-student housing. Well, that doesn't really fit what we're doing. And kind of what we were just talking about, the buy-right, if you want student housing, is the way to go. I understand that there are some parking questions. I don't think the city's getting what it's giving. And I don't think we're following the hard work that Clemson Next put together and the money that was spent to do it. And if we're not gonna use it, then we shouldn't reference it so much. And so I'm gonna have to say that I'm definitely against it.
Any other Commissioner comments?
And I apologize, I wasn't able to be at the work session, workshop that we had. I wasn't able to see any of the slides for that. I did listen to everything. But is there a permit in hand from the Corps of Engineers? And I, I don't guess you got, you guys can answer this question. But that would be my main concern is that is, is this all for naught if there's not a permit in hand for the work to be done on the creek today?
Purpose not in hand? It's underway right now?
Unfortunately, until you get the layout finalized through this process, you can't really finalize the hard core process. But it is all underway currently.
And then I guess my last question that I've heard a lot from what's going on downtown now is that if this project finally is approved, and mostly I'm saying this so it'll be on the record, is that will, will the owner commit to guaranteeing that all the work will be done on-site? That means not blocking roads, not, I understand the sidewalk work will have to be done if it's approved or interfering with traffic in any way throughout the building process. That's kind of my main ask that, that I would like to make sure is done if this project is approved. And you don't have to answer that. I just want to make sure that's on record.
Commissioner Crowe?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's some tie-in after the ordinance or stuff. I don't, word, I think it was misspelled. Two or three, it said confirm, or confine instead of confirm. But I had questions about the open space. That it's, let's see. There'll be dedicated public space, but then on seven, it says. All open space within the property shall be owned and maintained by the developer and it shall not be dedicated for public use. But opens, but under the definition of open space, it included public areas. So it says that you've got public areas, but then, public area, all the open space will be dedicated for public use? It's section one-ten versus, it's the third page under access where it says, "The dedicated public area will have its own access points separate from the two access points. The red zones or components of the project will have secured access to facility and parking spaces." Where would the access point be for that dedicated public area? And then on seven, "All open space within the property area shall be owned and maintained by the developer and it shall not be dedicated for public use."
So I'm trying to square that. I'm, there's probably a perfectly reasonable explanation of that, but I can't make that make sense in my head where it says if there's a public area, but then it says any open space which includes the public area.
So I believe what they're referring to is, so there is a large area in front of the building that is going to be upgraded as open space that is actually currently owned by the city and will be continued owned by the city. So it's about thirty feet from the edge of pavement to the face of this building. That is going to be upgraded to public open space, but is not part of this property.
Okay, because there's, when I'm looking at the site plan, I'm looking at part of the property that's dedicated public space? And that's where I'm getting, that may be exactly it, but does that need to be? I want, the public spaces on the site plan that is on the property, is that not accessible to the public?
The public space that is on their property is what, is like the, I guess we'll say the patio area in front of the restaurant and whatnot that you're referring to?
There's, there's a sign lot next to the creek in front of the parking and this whole big red area that goes all the way around. That's, I guess that's the public open space on their property. There's also some in front of four-hundred across the street. And I get that, I'm trying to just make it make sense because the, the green space area is lumped into the public open space area and from the wording. And I understand keeping resident amenities separate from public, like I have no problem with that. It's just trying to figure out what is written in here.
Okay, I think I'll probably have to turn to the developer. They want to address that.
Yeah, if their concern is about being fenced off, that's, that is not.
No, no, no. It's, it's just about the way it's written. And on one page it says that all, that, you know, there'll be a dedicated public area and then on the other it says the developer will maintain ownership of all open space and under the definition of open space, it included public areas.
So basically, we need to separate that out language-wise a little clearer and have another.
If you do the circle, the public use space is under this space, is now not available for public use.
And then have a, a diagram basically shows the differences a little clearer.
Yeah, yeah. It may just, it may just be changing on property public to versus, whatever it needs to be. But it seems like if you did that circle, then it would, it would kind of just go around. And I had occupancy questions under section one-eleven for density. So it, it says for area three, that is the big, the big area, it says, you know, occupancy for all resident units will be two, for all units will be limited to two per bedroom. And then you've got the city definition for occupant, which is fine, but it, or three hundred and thirty-five occupants per acre. So if you do the math on that, that's actually, and I know that's not, you, it's gonna be hard to find people who want to double up in rental bedrooms that much. But you could theoretically have a thousand twenty-five students in the big building and two hundred and seven in the small building. And that just seems like a much greater number than seven hundred and forty. And also to clarify, I think you had sent the question, I wanted to comment on this because I got mentioned on the email, but you had sent a question about not discussing the growing the number of units when it got redesigned.
Right. We discussed it the first time. It was lowering the back half of building one and working on building two as needed, but it wasn't add more beds.
Right, and that's what I wanted to clarify because I did, like, I did make the comment that five stories on the front with a three-story setback seems reasonable. I absolutely said that when I was referring to that. That was by exact words of this part was take the back part, two stories of that horseshoe and move them over here. It literally just meant, take that number of units and design-wise, if it works out, it works out. But I think that the fact that you guys gained forty beds is, is okay. It's, it's your, if you can do that and it makes it more feasible, fine. But we didn't gain anything for that either. Basically, out of that request, you guys, I mean, the residents get a slightly lower building back there from the design, but you guys also get forty more units. And then we ran into the parking issue of, we want to stay at point five, we can't really give up any more spaces. And that's because you gained forty beds. So you could be at point five still with twenty less spaces if you didn't gain those forty beds with the reworking of the size. So it was, it's, it's hard to square that reasoning for, or justification for saying, well, this is, this is as low as we can go because you kind of created the increased need for more parking to stay at that ratio. These last couple pages, I've got it started on our, I don't think there's anything else.
Can I respond to that one?
Sure.
So by moving beds from the main building to the smaller building, we have made more valuable units move away into a less valuable building because it's detached from both parking and amenities, which necessitated a slight additional bump in density to, to balance, to kind of add the, the parking, the public parking. So it's more expensive units, less valuable because they're detached from amenities and parking. So the density balanced that at the end of the day.
Okay. I don't think I had anything else. Other than I did mention the parking reduction program a little while ago and it came up as, might be something that we need to look into in the future, but that's regardless of this. I think I'm good for, oh, we can just. I think I'm good for, oh, we can just say now that I can see that. I don't even know if this is a comment or a question, would you guys, I guess, would you guys be okay with lowering that, either, I don't know if we can open it up for discussion for us, but if it would be possible to say a percentage of units, or a maximum number total, or what y'all want to do, or if y'all are okay with being double occupancy, every possibility.
I guess a question that I have is, all the other PDs, hadn't that been standard language?
I mean, every PD's different, but Moda, for example, we used people, like you said, persons, so it's, didn't use occupant, so there's no confusion with our city ordinance. And we did say a percentage of the units could be double occupancy, we did not give them, all of them, as double occupancy. So, I mean, I doubt, again, like you said, I don't think there's any way that they're gonna do double occupancy for all of them, so I think setting a percentage wouldn't be a bad thing, and saying that we're gonna change some of the use of the word occupant to, you know, the word person.
That was the other thing I forgot to mention, was that it was two occupancy for the bedroom instead of two people, because we had used that before, because you could, again, I don't think anybody do it, but you could put two families in one bedroom and wind up with eight people, so. And I don't mean that by families, but if you had three brothers, they could split a bedroom.
And I guess, just from that comment you had mentioned about the value, so, to me, that, the way I read that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, so the rent will be less on the smaller building than it would be in the larger building?
Not necessarily, but they may be, they'll likely be harder to lease, which may result in...
Commissioner Hyatt?
Um, yeah, I have a few thoughts. So, I too read through the white paper, the Clemson Next Plan, um, I guess. I also looked through the Clemson Corridor Plan from 2018. I don't think I can vote no for a development because I don't like it. I have to vote after I've looked at resident feedback, the city's comprehensive plan, regulation, zoning regulations, and the best data. I also think we're at a point where we're having a hard time balancing, like, growth and progress with nostalgia and tradition and the way things were. And we're wanting to constantly recreate that, and I know I'm not gonna be a popular person for saying that, but Clemson's growing and we do need to look at that. In the Clemson White Paper, it says that Clemson's been developing in a low-density way, a very low-density way, and I think that's what we're used to as residents. We're used to seeing slow growth, and we want to continue the slow growth. But then that's also what got us into this situation, because we're car-dependent. We want a one-to-one ratio of students living in apartment complexes, which means that many more cars downtown, and we're a traffic-heavy community. And when you look at the White Paper, it mentions having density in our corridors and considering walkability and bikeability. So, um, I've lived in Clemson for eleven years, and Clemson's changed a lot in eleven years, and I'm sure it's changed a lot for people who have been here for fifty years. But I can't, I still have to consider plan developments based upon our current city's vision. It took a lot of feedback, I participated in Clemson Next, I know many of you participated in Clemson Next. There were a lot of people in the community that were present, and they took that feedback. And I didn't like what Clemson Next said, but that doesn't mean that it's not valid and reliable information, just because it wasn't what I wanted to hear. So now I've had to read it and study it and apply those principles to some of the, I guess, what we're gonna do tonight, the voting. And you can take the Bible and make it mean what you want it to mean. And I can take the Clemson White Paper and make it mean what I want it to mean, and somebody else can read it and make it mean what they want it to mean. And there's seven of us, and that's why there's seven of us, because we're gonna interpret things a little bit differently. If we're looking at the Clemson White Paper as a way to stop development, then I don't think that's what, I don't think that's what the paper was intended for. I think you need to look at the Clemson White Paper and try to see where, does this development align with what the White Paper has in it, or what, you know, we have. I wrote down things that I think are benefits to the city when I've been reviewing this. And I'm gonna repeat things that have already been said, but these are the four things that are important to me, and they're implementing part of the downtown corridor plan, and that's on the east side of College. I think that's a huge plus for the city, because we have a lot of plans that we don't implement. And they're gonna, the developer is actually gonna implement that plan from Strode Circle to Keith Street. This increases walkability and bikeability by connecting students to businesses and to the university. And it also connects residents to the businesses and to the university. Another benefit's pedestrian sidewalks, mentioned on Riggs Drive, Strode Circle, they're gonna improve that. Again, this improves resident safety and walkability. And so we can, we can try to avoid development and stop development, or we can say, what can we as a community partner with development, getting back, to give back to the residents? There's a hundred, this is the third thing, 150 parking spots will be given to the city to be managed by the city. Do we have a plan for a parking deck? I mean, that was my, I went back to 2018, 2018, we're like wishing for 100 to 200 parking places. Is there a plan for a city parking deck? I don't, it's not really rhetorical, okay, there's not something in the works. So this is our parking deck, I mean, this is our 100 or 200 spaces that we need to help implement this plan. And then the last is the preservation of the creek and the open space there. I think the landscaping is nice in the area, it's gonna be monitored by the Army Corps of Engineers. I know there's a lot of concern about these creeks, but it's going to be monitored, and that area is going to be conserved, and it will provide, it looks like a pretty decent green space, even for residents in the neighborhood to enjoy. So, I appreciate everyone coming, all the feedback. I mean, as commissioners, I think it's hard for us to hear about development that's changing our town, something we may not want coming into our town, but we're growing, and Clemson's growing, and so rather than working against each other, I feel like we need to work together, and so I feel like the developer has answered questions and done what we've asked of them. So, I don't, I don't have any further questions, but I would like, I just wanted y'all to hear my point of view and where I will come, kind of to my conclusion for my vote.
Commissioner Cummings?
I guess I just wanted to add a couple of things to that from what the city, because I saw that question, what the city is getting, and I know Tom had asked that too. So that streetscape implementation, I think the retail space, and am I correct, this is the first building where that bond would be in place for the retail space?
Well, Moda's, and, well, this exact bonding mechanism, yes. But Moda has a very similar one, and the hub has a bonding mechanism as well.
Okay. And then I just did the math on the one, I think it was mentioned earlier, $30,000 per space. If we, the city, had to build that, so 150 parking spots represents 4.5 million, if that's, you know, at that price. Yeah, I think those are just, oh, and then the, I think it's in here about the signage for the neighborhood, which is also something about preserving neighborhoods, and so to make sure there's a clear, I guess, transition to the neighborhood. Yeah, I think those are, I've been torn about this, you know, going back and forth every day, being really torn about it. I'm not exactly happy with the smaller parcel over there and how that, how that came back a little more than I envisioned, but, yeah, so, but I do, I do think it's an opportunity to get a lot for the city. So I've just been torn, because it's not exactly what I want personally, as Commissioner Hyatt mentioned, but there are some advantages.
I would, I'd just like to add one other thing regarding the signage. I don't think we've seen any type of example of what that would look like, but if this were to pass the planning stage and then also city council, I would like to think that that signage, there would be a lot of community input from the neighborhood and the neighbors on how that looks and feels entering that, just a suggestion for you guys. And I would also add, I didn't mention earlier that, I guess this is about year three, that I've been on the commission, and this is by far probably the hardest decision on any of the processes we've had. It's been a lot of hours spent on this, I'm sure, by everybody on this commission, and I appreciate the community coming out and speaking and their input, not only the ones here, but also ones that I've spoke to out in the community as well, so thank you.
Any thoughts?
So... First and foremost, I hope this process, everybody is learning a lot about the whole process, and... What I've learned is a bigger process. What I've learned is the process gives different guidelines into what a planning commission is, and there's a lot of misconceptions of what a planning commission is. You really need to go and take a look at the statutes in the state of South Carolina. There is a separation between the planning commission and city council, even though what this is, is an advisory board. The one thing that has not come up tonight, that came up at the workshop a little bit, is the land use plan that our city council adopts, that's developed in a lot of ways. The criteria that are given in planning, for instance, there may be one input where the city says, "We want a $10,000 park," and our city can only afford $4,000. Well, there's an economic part, all these different parts have to go in different ways. I too have looked at some of the things, in 2017, the downtown corridor plan was adopted by our city council. And for me, I had to say, "What in the world's a downtown corridor plan?" And they said, "Yeah, it's a plan for downtown." And I said, "Well, what's the name of it?" And they said, "The downtown corridor plan." So I looked into that, I too have called people who have been involved and said, "Hey, explain to me what this is." And it was a desire of council at that time, and the citizens at that time, and the same desires that come back even from the Green Crescent Trail to other things. But this is for a specific session, section, that was adopted with the understanding that in order not to hurt businesses, but to promote businesses, that there had to be spaces. There has been many people who put out there that, about parking decks and things like that. How do you get the spaces? What is the lynchpin? How do you tie all of this together? I too struggle from the standpoint of, many times, what Commissioner Hyatt said is it moving the goalposts. So, we have a responsibility to look at everything from comprehensive plans, and the comprehensive plan is a snapshot in time and a suggestion of the best guess of what's going on in land use. Everyone from, since the seventies, has talked about, when there's density, density needs to be in this section to 93, every one of them. And that can be shown in every one of them. So all those things have to be concerned, because that is it. I mean, it's part of the planning process. To address the zoning part of it, we've been downzoned here. And so this is a mechanism, there are over 27 planned developments here. 27 planned developments here. Is it the process that is the most desirable? I don't even think you could ask any planner to say that, but when there's only one avenue, because you've been downzoned over periods of time, there's certain zonings that we should have, and is that in process to be corrected, yes. But this is the zoning process of the city, and it has to be abided by, to be listened to and to take a look at it. I understand the dollars, I understand the... If I sit here and think about understanding the by right and not by right, the question is, we're assuming that it would be at maximum bed count? Well, I don't know if that's possible, because I don't know that at maximum bed count somebody's gonna be able to afford to preserve the streams and to do those. And so I think when I hear at maximum, and I look at the site, which I've been out there over 22 times to take a look at it from every which way there is, that not everybody can do that. And not everybody is willing to do that, nor by right would that be done. So, there are tons of considerations when you take a look at that, and that's why this is a process. We're recommended by, we do have other bounds that were made by, but I think that we have to consider all of those things in here. Today's dollars are different than tomorrow's dollars. I can tell you that from participating in a project, a personal project, and we're over 46%. And that's due to increased material costs. I can also tell you that the city experiences increased costs through what's going on in our economy now. So today's dollars and tomorrow's dollars are different. It's tough, this is my town, I live downtown. But in my estimation, I have to set that aside when I sit here, because it's not about me. So those are the things that I look at, um, and I think we have to, I think, um, that's how we're required to. I can tell you for sure, a hundred percent, that everybody talks about traffic. I can tell you a hundred percent that every single study that's ever been done here says anything that's built outside in terms of density will increase traffic unbelievably. Every single study, and it almost seems to me is, when I look at it, and if I step back as a resident and I look at how much money gets wasted, studying, 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 analysis by paralysis, and when we don't have it, we do that, we don't do that, so. It's hard, and, um, what I would say is, everybody needs to understand that, and so, um, I appreciate everybody here, I appreciate all y'all. I appreciate all the input, and I'm trying to make the process where everybody is assured that they are heard, and you need to know that, and that's why the, the process either way continues. If this commission were to do this, ultimately, it resides in our city council of what we do. So those are the comments that I have. I can tell you that our planning staff works hard, um, at this and has worked hard at this and has worked, um, during this, but that's what they're charged to do. That's what they are charged to do. So at that, I would ask, do we have any motion?
I have a question about what John was mentioning earlier. If, if this is an action item, do we mention the density of the one bedroom right now, or do we just? I don't know.
That's not, I, for, so I, I didn't know if I was jumping around, but I was gonna see if we wanted to address, I mean, I, I don't know everybody's general feel on this whole process, but if we wanted to address the written ordinance or take a vote with recommendations added. Personally, I like, no, I read this, I okayed it. If I missed something, it's on me, not, I recommended A and it didn't, like, I like having what I'm voting on in front of me.
Jake, is Jacob still there?
He's asleep over there. What is the pro, best process for that?
Well, I mean.
If you want to change that, what's, what's the best way to go about it, or, um, if you want to change the occupancy?
Person versus occupant?
Oh, you should, you should say person, or you put a specific definition of what occupant means in this, um.
When we're voting.
Now, or do you do it later?
Do we do it now, before we vote?
My recommendation would be, you say that we would like to clarify that occupant is to mean a single person in this, and that we want to set a percentage of blah, 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 whatever you guys want to set the percentage of, that can be double occupants. And then we'll work out the, you know, exact language to do that, but just be very clear as to what you want in there.
But I think there are more than just that one item as well. There were a couple of items that we were talking about.
Yep.
On there that, I mean.
Okay, that's one, so go to the next one. And we're asking the best way to do that.
Well, I think, I mean.
Do we make a motion about this?
Do we want to go through all this right now and try and get it all straight now, or do we want to try to get it corrected and have and possibly consider this at a later date? Whether that later date be.
The ordinance.
Yes, consider, well, it'd have to be a whole, you can't do half of it, I mean.
We would delay the vote.
Right.
Until a future meeting.
Right, that's, that's.
Process would work.
I think that's the decision is, do we want to try to verbally express every correction and change we want and then be okay with how we verbally express it, or do you guys want to make the recommendations and then see it, and then we can do our standard email process of I missed this or do that or whatever and get it corrected?
I mean, exact verbiage is probably going to adapt and change between now and this get approved, just so you, as I understand, you guys are just a recommending body.
So that.
That's what I was gonna say. I was gonna say, ultimately, the planning commission is a recommending body, so I think it's, it's okay to vocalize what you're saying and even make, vocalize those changes, but ultimately, the final draft of this is voted on by council, which will obviously have changes to the document too.
But as the change, I'm sorry, as the changes, we'll send it back to you guys, just to, so you can see and say, hey, yay, nay, because you guys are gonna always show up to the city council meeting and say, this is not what I said.
Absolutely.
So, so occupant equals one person, and what percent will be double occupant?
I think what we did with Mota, instead of changing the definition of occupancy to avoid confusion, we just added person, so change it in here where it says two occupants per bedroom, change it to two persons per bedroom, and then I, if we need to add definition of person, we could do that, um, or, you know, people use it. And then we need to do the double occupancy percentage or whatever.
What do we do for Mota?
We're not giving a hundred.
Mota, I'd have think forty percent.
Yeah, it's forty.
Yeah. It's three hundred more people.
So I mean, is that nice? I do the percentages, so currently, I don't, I have the number. Currently, it's sixty-two to sixty-three percent double in the big building and forty-seven, forty-eight in the small, so. Knocking twenty percent off of that one, would you say three hundred?
Gosh, dude.
So, so, yeah, I mean, it's. Trying to fix.
I, I don't care where the double occupants live, whether they live in the main building or the other building.
I just, that's the way I did it. This is a hundred beds over here, so I multiplied the beds times whatever. It came out to different percentages either on the different properties, um.
I, I wouldn't, it wouldn't bother me whether they lived on one property or the other.
Doesn't bother me either. I, I mean, I have no idea, I mean, one of the other thoughts was, okay, the one and two, uh, studios and one bedrooms can be doubles, because those are probably more likely to be doubled up by grad couples or student, whoever, you know, versus two kids just sharing a bed because it cuts price, but, um, it's just a percentage. I don't know, I mean, it, it sounds like it's twelve hundred and thirty kids if you don't change it, which I know is, just, it just sounds like a lot, and if it's not necessary, then maybe it could be changed.
Realistically, what, how, I mean, what percentage are double occupants? See, like five percent, three percent, like, we don't know.
I mean, we don't know really, I mean, for what, for Mota or for?
Um, we wouldn't know how many people are.
Yeah, can it be like twenty percent?
That's, that's what I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I misspoke, I said forty. I can read you the exact language if you'd like that. Um, the Mota reads. Of course, I'm gonna miss it now. Maximum occupancy, twenty percent of the total residential units have two occupant per bedroom in one and two bedroom units, otherwise the maximum occupancy is of the dwellings is one occupant per bedroom.
You just want to mimic that language, just say what?
Yes, mimic the language in Mota.
Yeah, I've, that's, I mean, that's fine. I just, I thought it sounded like a lot and wanted to bring it up for discussion.
Are you, are you good with twenty percent, like they did with Mota?
I, I just thought it needed to be brought up. Twenty percent.
And was there anything else?
Uh, the language about the public space, um, and it's, it's a walk, because it's mentioned in like three or four different spots, and I didn't know if this is.
Yeah, I think that we're gonna have to get with developer and kind of just do a clear breakdown of what is public open space, what is?
Well, and that's what I mean, is that's also kind of hard for me to like, say, okay, I think this is good or bad, just depending on what, like, the way I read this right now and look at this, I don't know if this public area is publicly usable area or not, and what are the rules, can they, next week, since they still own it and everything, say it's closed, it's no longer public space, because it's not dedicated public space. That's, you know.
I was gonna suggest that we just pull up the site plan and.
That's, that's what I'm staring, that's what I'm staring at right here, but I mean, but, so in, in the past, we've run into issues where we've had agreements with somebody and it, something didn't get written in, and then somebody sold it, and then what we agreed to got changed, so. That's my, that's my hangup on having stuff written, and here it is in front of me that I can just stand on.
If I could, is it a paper?
Yes.
Um, in, in my read of this conversation, we're really talking about two different areas, right? It's gonna be the public sidewalk in the, the front there, and then the stream area, is that correct?
Yes. And we're saying the stream area from the stream to the road, correct? Okay, so the two public areas are from the building frontage to the street, and from the stream to the road.
But not from the stream to the building?
I don't believe.
No, that's, do you guys have this one?
Because I mean, like, how are we gonna know not to cross the bridge or something?
There is no bridge.
There, there's not gonna be one. There's gonna be a separate public access to anything from the public areas. And that's, and that's why I wanted to, it's, it's, if you go through and you catch it and all of it, it really does just kind of walk you into a circle, and I, and I'm not saying anybody means anything, it's just one of those things where it's like, if, if it needs to make sense, let's just make it make sense.
Right, right now it's not matching, that's your concern. I mean, we, we would match the site plan that you're looking at, make sure the language, uh.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, is so I see the site plan, it says it's public open space. I got it, I, that's gonna be there, but it also says that you guys are gonna, the public open, the public space is included in the open space, which will be maintained and not be accessible to the public. It'll be owned by the developer and not accessible to the public. I think it's just one of those things where somebody used the same word for two different things and it got circled, it kind of loops itself in that way. It, I don't think it's any kind of, I just think it need, that needs to be straightened out.
Can you read the page in the section that's the problem?
Yes, it is. Access, says dedicated public area will have its own access points, separate from the two access points, that's the access, that's the dedicated access, page seven. Open space will consist of setbacks, buffers, lawn landscaping, sidewalks, crown level seating area, and hardscape. Building courtyard and pool area are also shown on the conceptual plan. The open space for courtyard pool area, where it says landscape golf park, pool, uh, and a pool deck. All open space within the property area shall be owned and maintained by the developer, owner, and it shall not be dedicated for public use.
So that's the language we gotta change?
Within the property.
Got it.
Right, so it says within the property.
Yeah, and some of that is within the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's easy enough.
Yeah, I think the wording of that's probably four. I think it just means they're not going to turn over that property for the city to maintain. Anything on their property, they'll maintain.
Right, I mean, I, that's what I'm saying, I'm, I, I, I understand the intention behind that, but I, this to me didn't. It, you know, I think if you guys.
Referencing that reference map that you said, we'll, we'll name it differently. It'll be the open space and then the public open space. And just take off that language I was saying there.
What, what is the part on, like, on that drawing, what is the part that's city-owned right now, that you mentioned earlier?
So you see like that whole area right there?
Yes.
That's owned by the city.
Okay.
So you see where they have the little tables? That's not owned by the city. So it's a very weird property line in the front, so even though it looks straight across there, it is by no means straight across. That's why they're kind of having the, uh, the, yeah, it, it's not at all.
Yeah.
So that's why, it's gonna, when you're out there, it's gonna feel all the same, but you're gonna be walking on and off city property left and right.
Just clarify.
So what happens when someone trips and falls? Actually, it's property they're on.
Okay, that makes sense.
Some sort of marker between the two?
Usually we do a pavement change, so the, the actual, uh, the type of surface, we always do a change at the property lines.
Because it, like, if you get hurt on the property.
And that, I mean, that's, the language in the ordinance, to be clear, is the part that are on ours is, we'll be liable for.
Yeah.
But, no, they're maintaining it and making it look nice and everything.
But one of the things I had sent over, and I, I can't pull up PDFs on my phone, um, but is, basically, it's just the verbiage and, and to, to use this, and you guys have a copy of it?
Yes.
Is that, say for example, somewhere over by that stream, um, if the owner is responsible for mani, maintaining that, and say there's a limb, or there's a tree, or something that they left there, they were negligent on, they didn't do proper maintenance, they fall, somebody falls, they fall into the creek, break their arm, break their shoulder, well, now the city's responsible for that, um, even though we weren't responsible for that maintenance. I know it seems extremely far-fetched, um, but I think you have to take everything into account when it comes to liability. And if we're just gonna say, well, yeah, you guys are gonna handle the maintenance, be responsible for it, but we're taking on the liability, that, to me, that's an issue for the city, that I'm sure that.
We need to provide some type of oversight or something, yeah.
But it needs to be in writing, and I, I understand that this document will change, but we won't have a say in what it changes, so what we're what we're saying that we recommend, or we do not recommend tonight, that's going to city council if we decide to vote, um, is what we've agreed upon.
Right, and that, and I know we've, there's been a lot of discussion about the front, but the side, big green space was more of my concern, because public access and being open, who owns the liability is what, but you've also got the, okay, there's the public parking there, you know, noise ordinance, is it closed like public parks? Can they just decide to close it since it's private, it's publicly accessible, they're like, you know what? We're having too many kids congregating over there, we're having an issue, now it's closed, so it's green, but it's no longer public access, publicly accessible, because there's not a public use agreement for the public area? The sidewalks, I get, you know, that's kind of understood, and it's gonna happen, but over here in this green space area.
I'm just thinking, we're, we're gonna be doing a public use agreement anyways for the parking garage.
Right, but so, but as of right now, would I be correct in saying that like, since it's owned, whatever, it's just a public area that they decided, our future owner decided, you know what, we, we don't want that to be public, because we don't want the liability, or it's causing too much of a headache for landscape maintenance or something like that?
I'm just trying to think if maybe it would be good if we have, because obviously our lawyers are gonna be, kind of with a public use agreement for the parking garage and the public open space. Does that make sense?
I know we closed the parks at certain, you know.
I mean.
Is the water fountain park across the street closed at ten P M? I mean, it's just a water fountain.
Really?
You can go over there and put soap in it.
I can't put soap in it.
There is, but there's, since there's no.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Would you guys go into a public use agreement for the open space? The paved area and the, the wooded area next to the street, it would come.
Yeah.
I can see, that's another thing, I keep saying pink, it was pink. So, uh, just so you guys have an idea, thank you her for pulling this up, um, but basically, at the end of zone, it can go for any of them, where the maintenance and responsibility, um, so the last sentence, city of Clemson will ensure and hold harmless to developer or any future owner of the development from any liability associated with the public open space. And what I had found as far as verbiage, you would add, but only where hazards are reduced to lowest level feasible and where substantial and non-harmful compliance exists with applicable safety rules, regulations, and requirements. So, just.
Anything else? So, help me summarize this.
I would suggest saying, if you guys are. I would suggest saying, if you guys are looking to take a vote, you know, someone's gotta make a motion, either in the positive or the negative. Negative, either way, so if you're doing in the positive, I would suggest with the, that recommendation to city council, that occupancy be changed to one person with the occupancy rules to mimic those from the Moda application. And for the open space, that it be looked at and examined with the, um, liability of the city in, and access in place, and potentially a use agreement put in place as part of this development.
Would you say a code? I'll, I'll ask for clarification, trying to get this up a few ways. Would the public open space be considered an amenity for the building?
Public open space be an amenity?
For the resident.
What was the question?
I mean, everyone, it's amenity to everyone, so yeah, I guess. I mean, why, I, I mean, no, there's a different thing between like, there's actual amenities in this building.
Right, right. So that's, well, that's what I asked, cause like, the courtyards, I'm assuming, the interior courtyard would be...
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's set amenities in this building.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how, cause the amenities, other than the pool deck and the pool, will be open 24/7. And I just wanna make sure that that does not apply to this space.
Yeah.
If we don't think it's appropriate to apply there because we do close parks and things like that, and if we need this one to have different restrictions or not have any restrictions, but that was, it's, it's big green space that's separate from the building, by public parking.
Yeah. I mean, again, I would say that the recommendation for a use agreement would be appropriate. And, you know, that'd be a separate document, same as the parking document that's worked out with our lawyers to, yeah, and their lawyers, to make sure everyone is covered. Cause I don't think any of us would say that you're qualified to get all of the language right, that, you know, no one's gonna get sued unless, you know what I'm saying? So I think that would be a better, uh, basically leaving it up to the attorneys to work out that. Cause you're right, I mean, it's great to, public, you know, pub, public private partnerships are hallmark of a good downtown. Absolutely. But they are tricky to, you know, legalize.
None of us put our law degrees. Right, yeah, I'm, these are just things that, like I said, I'm, you know...
But I don't think it's interchangeable. I think what you're, you know, like you said, like, if that's what you're concerned about, I would say just basically state that is, um, you're recommending whatever you're recommending, if you're recommending approval, recommend approval with the city council, looking at the public open space with terms of definitive where it is and how it will be used, and a use agreement.
Okay, any more questions? No? Okay. I make a motion to recommend PUD 0004312025, proposed plan development at 398 College Avenue with the, um, recommendations that we discussed tonight, where an occupant was one person, and that the verbiage will mimic that of Moda for double occupancy at 20%. Um, also, uh, recommend clarification for the discussion of open space versus public open space, and, um, the liability, recommend clarification for the liability ver, verbiage, and explore a potential use agreement for the public open space.
So we have a motion on the table? Any other comments at this time before we vote?
We only have a motion.
We, oh, sorry. I think, I fell asleep with Jacob over there, I apologize. Um, I knew everybody's tired, I apologize. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion on the table, seconded by Commissioner Rice. Any discussion or comments? We'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Company? Commissioner Crowley?
Nay.
Commissioner Hyatt?
Yea.
Commissioner Kernigan?
No.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries.
Outside?
Yeah.
Okay. Seeing that that's done, are there any advisory items?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we do have a discussion items, and do, have you given everybody a copy of this?
There was a, I laid a hard copy.
And Jeremiah sent them to us as well.
This is, um, we have been asked by city council, we've been asked by the mayor, I've got two letters on this. I know that this is important, so we do have to read through this. Um, and I'm gonna read through it because they've asked all chairs to do that. This is passed by the city council, is the City of Clemson Code of Ethics and Conduct for Elected and Appointed Officials. The purpose, the City of Clemson adopts this Code of Ethics and Conduct for Elected and Appointed Officials to assure that all officials, while exercising their office, conduct themselves in a manner that will instill public confidence and trust and fair, open integrity of Clemson city government. Ethics is the first part. The citizens and business of Clemson are entitled to have fair, ethical, and accountable local government. To this end, the public should have full confidence in all officials: one, comply with both the letter and spirit of the laws and policies affecting the operations of government; two, are independent, impartial, and fair in their judgment and actions; three, use your public office for the public good, not for personal gain; and, four, conduct public deliberations and processes openly, unless required by law, to be confidential in an atmosphere of respect and civility. Therefore, members of any council, boards, committees, or commissions, and that's referred to as members or members, member or members, sorry, shall conduct themselves in accordance with the following ethical standards: one, act in the public interest, recognizing stewardship of public interest must be their primary concern; members will work for the common good of the people of Clemson and not for any private or personal interest; members will ensure fair and equitable treatment of all persons, claims, and transactions coming before them; number two, comply with both the spirit and letter of the law and city policy; members should comply with the laws of the United States, the laws of the state of South Carolina, and the City of Clemson in performance of their public duties; three, addresses and conducts of members: the professional and personal conduct of members while exercising their office must be above reproach and avoid even the appearance of impropriety; members shall refrain from abusive conduct, including personal charges or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members, the staff, or the public. Respect for the process: members shall perform their duties in accordance with the processes and rules of order established by the city council; members shall respect all official decisions. Conduct at public members' meetings: members shall prepare themselves for public issues, listen courageously and attentively to all public discussion before the body, and focus on the business at hand. In order for a board, a committee, or a commission to be effective and efficient and to accomplish its purpose, its members must be actively involved, attentive to the business of the body. Therefore, members shall make every effort to attend all meetings. Six, decisions based on merit: members shall base their decisions on merits and substance of the matter at hand rather than on unrelated considerations. When making adjudicative decisions, decisions where the member is called upon to determine and apply facts applicable to an individual case, members shall maintain an open mind until conclusion of the hearing on the matter, and shall base their decision on facts presented at the hearing and the law. Seven, communication: for adjudicated matters pending before the body, members shall have and consider the same information when making decisions. Members shall refrain from receiving information outside of an open public meeting or the agenda materials, except on the advice of the city attorney. Members shall publicly disclose substantive information that is relevant to a matter under consideration by the body, which they may have received from sources outside of the public decision-making process. Confidential information: members must maintain the confidentiality of all written materials and verbal information provided to members, which is confidential and privileged. Members shall neither disclose confidential information without proper legal authorization, nor use such information to advance their personal, financial, or other private interests. Conflict of interest: members who may have a conflict of interest regarding a decision shall disclose a matter to the city clerk and file a recusal statement. If the member is uncertain about an issue being a conflict of interest, they shall consult with the city attorney to determine the potential conflict. If advised by the city attorney to seek advice from State Ethics Commission or other appropriate agency, a member shall not participate in a decision unless and until they have diligently pursued, diligently pursued and received advice allowing their participation. The member shall provide the city clerk and the city attorney a copy of written request or advice, and conform his or her participation to the advice given. Ten, advocacy: members shall represent the official policies or positions of the city council to the best of their ability when designated as representative for this purpose. When presenting their individual opinions and positions, members shall explicitly state they do not represent the City of Clemson, nor will they allow the interference that they, the inference that they do. Members have the right to personally endorse candidates for all council seats and other elected offices, noting that it is inappropriate to mention or display endorsements during any city meetings. Policy role of members: members shall respect and adhere to the council form of city government as outlined in Clemson City Code. In this structure, the city council determines the policy of the city with the advice, information, and analysis provided by city staff, boards, committees, commissions, and the public. Except as provided by City Code, members shall not interfere with administrative functions of the city or the professional duties of city staff, nor shall they impair the ability of staff to implement council policy decisions. Twelve, independence of boards, committees, and commissions: because of the value of independent advice of boards, committees, and commissions to the public decision-making process, members of councils shall refrain from using their position to influence deliberations or outcomes of board, committee, and commission proceedings, and shall refrain from attending or participating in their meetings. Unless deliberating an agenda item during a meeting, members of boards, committees, and commissions shall refrain from speaking out against or in favor of matters that are being deliberated by their board, committee, or commission to ensure due process and objectivity. Positive workplace environment: members shall support the maintenance of a positive and constructive work environment for city employees, for citizens and businesses dealing with the cities. Members shall recognize their special role in dealings with city employees, too, and no way create the perception of inappropriate direction to staff. The second area of this is conduct. The conduct guidelines are designed to describe the manner in which elected and appointed officials should treat one another. City staff and constituents and others, they come into contact while representing the City of Clemson. Elected and appointed officials conduct, con, conduct with each other. A, honor the role of the chair in maintaining order. It's the responsibility of the chair to keep the comments of members on track. Members should honor efforts to focus discussions on current agenda items. If there's a disagreement about the agenda or the chair's actions, those objections should be voiced politely and with reason. B, practice civility and decorum in discussions and debate. Difficult questions, challenges to a point of view, and criticism of ideas and information are legitimate elements of debate by a free democracy. Free debate, however, does not justify impertinent, personal, slanderous, threatening, or disparaging comments. C, avoid personal comments that could offend. If a member is offended by the remarks of another member, the offended member should make notes of the words used and call for a point of personal privilege. That challenges the other to justify or apologize for the language you use. The chair will maintain control of that discussion. D, demonstrate effective problem-solving approaches. Members have the responsibility to show how individual with dis, disparate points of view can find common ground and sink compromise that benefits the community. Elected, appointed officials' public code of conduct. This is area C. Be welcoming to speakers. While questions of clarification may be asked, officials' primary role during the public testimony is to listen. B, be fair and equitable in allocating public hearing time. The chair will announce limits at the start of the public hearing process as set by the governing body. C, proactive act, active listening. Is disconcerting to speakers for members not to look at them when they're speaking? Is fine to look at documents or to make notes. Members shall be conscious of facial expressions and avoid those that can be interpreted as disrespectful, such as smirking, anger, or boredom. D, maintain an open mind. Members of the public deserve an opportunity to influence the thinking of elected and appointed officials. E, ask for clarification, but avoid debating argument. Only the chair can interrupt a speaker during a presentation. However, a member can ask the chair for a point of order if the speaker's off topic and exhibiting behavior and language a member finds disturbing. Elected and appointed officials' conduct with city staff is the next part. Treat all staff as professionals. Clear, honest communication that respects abilities, experience, and dignity of individuals is expected. Poor behavior towards staff is not acceptable. B, do not disrupt city staff from their jobs. Members should not disrupt city staff while they're engrossed in performing their job functions in order to have their individual needs met. Do not attend staff meetings unless explicitly requested by staff. C, never publicly criticize employees. Members should never express concerns about the performance of city employees in public, to the employees directly, or to the employees' manager. Concerns or comments about staff performance should only be shared with the city administrator through private conversation. D, do not get involved in administrative functions. Members acting in the individual capacity must not attempt to influence city staff on the making of appointments, awarding of contracts, selecting of consultants, processing of applications, or granting of city licenses and permits. E, do not solicit political support from staff. Members should not solicit any type of political support, financial contribution, display of posters or lawn signs, signs from city staff. City staff may, as private citizens with constitutional rights, support political candidates, but all such activities must be done away from the workplace. Sanctions: ethics training for election, elected officials. Members who are out of compliance with state or city mandated requirements for ethics training shall not represent the city on intergovernmental assignments or subcommittees and may be subject to sanctions. B, behavior and conduct: the Clemson Code of Ethics and Conduct expresses standards of ethical conduct expected for many members of city council and other appointed... many members of city council and other appointed positions. Members have the primary responsibility to assure that ethical standards are understood and met, and that public can have full confidence in the integrity of government. Members have the additional responsibility to intervene when actions of members that appear to be in violation of the Code of Ethics and Conduct are brought to their intentions, or brought to their attention. Members who intentionally and repeatedly do not follow proper conduct may be reprimanded or formally censored by the council, lose seniority, or committee assignments, both within the City of Clemson and with intergovernmental agencies, or other privileges afforded by the council. Serious infractions of Code of Ethics or Code of Conduct could lead to other sanctions as deemed appropriate by the council. Witnessing members should point out to the offending member any perceived infractions of the Code of Ethics and Conducts. If the offense continues, the matter should be referred to the mayor in private. If the mayor is the individual whose actions are being questioned, the matter should be referred to the mayor pro tem. It is a responsibility of these leaders to initiate action if a member's behavior may warrant sanction. If no action is taken by the mayor, mayor pro tem, then the alleged violation can be brought to the full council. Implementation. The Code of Ethics and Conduct is intended to be self-enforcing and is an expression of the standards of conduct for members expected by the city. It therefore becomes the most effective when members are thoroughly familiar with it and embracing its provision. That's why we read that, because of the intent from the city. But I would remind everybody here that you have an additional code of conduct, and that code of conduct is outlined in the 1994 state law that gives individual responsibilities of the planning commission. So, there are things in here, you do have to be separated from council, and we can go through those at another date if you want, and how you should do. Everybody here has taken the training, and it is expected that that is first and foremost, and above and beyond what's here. Many of the things here will not apply, because of this body is outlined in the state law. Everybody understand? Everybody got it? Good? Good? You good? Good? Okay. Doing what I was asked to. Are there any staff reports?
No.
Well, we are. Sorry, I got excited, I'm sorry. Two things. They will be going for a public hearing date for the planned development. It's my voice is going.
Mine is going too, aren't you?
But we'll be going for a public hearing date, and let you know soon, as we know, when that will be, change the process internally a little bit. How we seek those dates should go a little bit faster and smoother, and not have to wait all the way to get an answer for the next city council meeting. So, anyway, we'll move ahead with that. And I have a copy of the rules and procedure for, her design for the amendment, and tomorrow, he'll sign it here in a few minutes, or a minute, and then I'll get everybody a copy, scanned, and go have a copy with his signature on it for that amendment we did with the public comment being, the deadline being the Friday prior to the meeting, noon Friday prior to the meeting. So, that's all I have.
Are we going to have the workshop on concrete?
We'll start.
I think we need to explore that. I think there's plenty of questions, and I think there are more questions after we are able to study this, that we'll have, at least I know I will.
Yeah, and I know the B R would love to do another joint session. I think that went pretty well, personally. So, I don't know if you guys want to get like...
I think we do need to do that, because they had an outline of everything that was in their purview. I thought that was helpful. I think for us to do a similar outline with what's in our purview, because some things get confused sometimes, and I think would be very well-received, and something that we can take up in doing that to help the process flow smoother.
One more thing, and I know we want to get out of here. Can we host an ethics training for planning commission, or all, you know, we have to do training every year, so I'm about to have to do it online, and that's fine, but can you not teach us? And...
Sure. So, let me answer that. Today, I did ask that question. I did go to Andy. The M A S C does not have an approved training to do that. I talked with Art, why don't you tell him what your answer was and how long that takes?
You certainly could put something together, find someone, what, to get those three hours of continuing and credit that's required. There is a state committee that has to review, so you'd have to put together a course, and you submit it, and they will...
They already have the courses. Can they just give you the PowerPoint? No, it's not like that.
There may be something out there, I don't know, check ethics. But we could also find someone qualified, and may not get three hours, it may only last an hour, or whatever, but that would be the difference. To get three hours of credit, it has to be a course that's been approved by a committee.
Okay, thank you.
So, in short, I think in the future, if those courses are developed within, and we plan for the future, by next year, that can be done and submitted, and that course will always be available here. So, if two or three are done that way, then it will always be here for the future.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, but...
Good point. Anything else?
Y'all already have a meeting, the week of the eighth, I believe, in September, but most likely, we will have the second steering, or, not the second, but it's late. I have an additional steering committee meeting with city council on the conference plan. We have the draft, we've gone through it, staff has, so that it'll be turned over to you guys to start going through the draft as well. And if you haven't, don't forget, the last thing I'll say is, we have the Abernathy Park public hearing on the 26th of August, I believe, is for staff. Just watch out for Abernathy Park, not public hearing, community input session.
Community input session.
Sorry, sorry. Again, it's late, but it's important that y'all show up, because that's planning the development there, and all this tying in together, as directors of planning commission had a hand in that, so it's important that y'all voice your opinions on what should happen in that part.
They're going to talk about dredging? Are they going to have the core engineers there?
You bring it up.
For dredging?
No, if we bring it up, this is just where, like, they give a comment here, is that kind of made...
This is what we want.
Because that's at the core there, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've been almost all, like, as part of the team that we're working with, the course involved in that, certainly, and certainly, engineer is as well. But, yeah, we're going to talk to them about what we can and can't do. There's a lot of rules around dredging, obviously, but it's important that y'all come up. That's all I got.
That being said, is there a motion?
I will make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Make seven motions.
Second.
All clear?